Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special late night edition of the Board of Selectmen meeting here September 5th. We'll open, as we usually do, with our liaison reports. We'll hear from the town manager after taking public comment. We have a series, we have a proclamation of Recovery Month with our CASA. We've got a series of topics, including volunteer subcommittee appointments, the approval of a 186 Summer Street preservation restriction, and that will be joined in that meeting with the Historic District Commission and the Historic Commission vote. We'll continue our discussions of last week from the Board of Health. We'll bring up a discussion from, I think, six years ago, 2011, on the subject of train, the depot parking, and the compo shared sticker pricing. And then we'll review demand fees, history, and propose what, if anything, we do about them. We have one set of minutes to approve, and that will be it for the evening. Let's see, I only have one thing to report. I did want to make a note that former Readingite Brendan Hildreth, grandson of our own Bill Brown, was recently appointed to the North Carolina Council on Development Disabilities by Governor Roy Cooper. And that's a council that works throughout the state to assure the people with disabilities of all sort and their families have access to community services, individualized support, and other forms of assistance. So that's a group of 40 persons, of which 60% are those afflicted with intellectual or other developmental disabilities. So Reading's youth go far and wide, and this is a great contribution. I know his parents, we obviously know him well, Bill, but this is a great young man who didn't choose this path, but has made the best of it, and he's made the paper.
My daughter tells me he's more diplomatic than I.
Yeah.
That's hard to imagine.
No shock there, Bill.
I have a copy, I'll pass it around to others. But with that, I'll turn to my right, Mr. Holton.
I have nothing to report except the wedding. I was busy with that.
Suitably fatigued, so. Dan?
Yes, I'm happy to report that a meeting has been set up between myself, the RMLD two board members, and the CAB to discuss a suitable annual CPI index for increasing the payment in lieu of taxes. That meeting will be held on September 20th at 6:30 PM at RMLD headquarters, and I'm assured that that's far enough in advance of sundown that we'll not interfere with religious obligations that evening. Bob, I also want to ask about the timing of your review. I feel like I've dropped the ball on something here. Am I supposed to be requesting and aggregating?
All right. I don't know.
Between now and the next meeting.
I'll help however you need me to help.
Has that form that you guys were exchanging been finalized?
Yeah, I think I sent you the same one as last year. I'll go back and look at my emails.
Send me the final form, I'll take care of disseminating through you or otherwise, and then aggregating the results.
All right, thank you.
And we have time on the 26th, I guess we get to doing that.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Barry?
Nothing to report, other than Dan and I had a VASC meeting today, but will be part of the agenda later on.
Thank you. Andy?
Nothing for me.
Very good. With that, I will open the floor to public comment. If any of you choose to speak, please stand, speak your name for the audio, and tell us what's on your mind.
Nancy Dr. Phil Street, I wanted to address several statements that the Board of Selectmen made last Tuesday, August 29th, after the Board of Health left. First was the question that was raised as to why the Board of Health did not contact Town Council for consultation. While in past, when I have asked Board of Selectmen directly to contact Town Council for another health-related issue, I was told by the former chair not to. I'm going to share that email.
Nancy, would this be better served under the subject matter devoted to this?
No, no. But thank you. The question, I think, is why did the Board of Selectmen and the town manager not contact Town Council? Because in our July Board of Health meeting, we shared our June 27th letter from Cheryl Sabaro, who's the Director of Policy of Law, Policy and Law, and her email opened with the statement, quote, "This is really an issue for Town Council." That letter was read aloud in our July Board of Health meeting. The copy was made available to the Board of Selectmen liaison through our chair. I will also give Caitlin a copy of that. My concern was Town Council, it was apparent he had never been informed of the public health nurse's email until last Tuesday night. Now, the other issue is the Board, your chair, made a compelling statement about business protocol, needing good chemistry, behavior for the good of the community. The question is then, why has the Board of Selectmen failed to follow through on the Board of Health's repeated requests to investigate why we have lost three health department employees in six months? This was a request that was made to the former chair, it's been made to the whole board, and it's made to, has been made to our liaison.
I don't recall that.
I actually, I actually find it curious why nobody is interested in why our public health nurse left so abruptly. If you remember, last week, Jean specifically said she almost fled Town Hall. What we're talking about is what we call duty to care. Now, goodness, and when we talk about goodness, I'm going to remind people, my nursing license, Donna Pierce's nursing license, we have a moral clause, as do 3.1 million nurses. That's called the Nurses Act. It means we have to ethically and legally be good. Now, the last question I have, and this is really for the Board, I'm going to give Caitlin all of these for the record. This is the former chair's email. This is Cheryl Sabaro's email that was made available to the Board. And this is also our reference to Cheryl Sabaro's email and the request to have Town Council be notified, that was in our approved meeting minutes, it's on page three. The last question I have is, I am still waiting for an explanation as to why was a police detail sent to the Board of Health's meeting?
I didn't send it.
I've requested that information from the Board.
I think it has something to do with that chain of emails that was precipitated by Ms. Pierce from the surrounding communities.
I don't know of an email.
There was a potential of a number of nurses showing up in solidarity, we didn't know what was going to happen.
To an open meeting?
Yeah, and...
What was the threat to public safety?
I don't know, but someone said they felt unsafe. It wasn't me, and the police were summoned.
Could you be more specific?
No.
Because I'm on a board, I am a taxpayer that's on a volunteer board, and a police detail was sent to a board meeting and stood behind a volunteer taxpayer. I would like an explanation.
It wasn't to intimidate you, Nancy, it was because someone felt unsafe because of events that had transpired, which could have caused the crowd to show up. We didn't know what the motivations of that crowd were.
I see a crowd here. How, do you know how many people showed up at that meeting? I believe there were...
Nancy, I believe the point is you don't know what you don't know.
So please answer the question. Why was a police detail? That is not a very...
That's what I heard.
What was the threat to safety? A lot of nurses? Is that the explanation? A lot of nurses were coming to an open meeting?
There was a clear effort on the part, I don't know if I'm stepping over the line here, the part of the former health nurse through some means of a mass email chain to announce her sudden departure from Reading, and I think foment a lot of anxiety in other communities.
But that's not material. The point is that a town employee felt unsafe and requested it, and that's all we need.
That's all you need to know.
That's all we need to know, and that's not original.
And was there a reason why you didn't inform the Board of what the threat was?
It's not material.
It's not material. I didn't know about it until the police knew.
Nor did I. It occurred after I began to know it, after it happened. But the point is, all it takes is a single individual to say, "Look, I don't know what's going to happen," or "I'm feeling uncomfortable." We don't know what's going to happen. No one's got a timepiece to look into the future.
And no one in the town thought or deemed it necessary to notify the Board? It was our meeting that there was a threat?
It's not material. We don't notify folks when we have the police in the back for whatever reason we do.
And you're not notified if there's a threat made?
There's police at town meeting all the time, there's a guy in the back.
I'm asking you, you're not informed when a police officer shows up because a threat's been made in one of your meetings?
Not necessarily.
No, we're not. A police officer often is here.
For reasons not only to...
Police officers are always welcome in Town Hall, they're always welcome at Town Meeting, any Town Meeting as far as that is concerned. At every Town Meeting, there is at least one or more...
It was highly unusual, and you've been to our meetings.
It was highly unusual.
You have been to our meetings.
I have.
They are not rather rambunctious.
No, but this employee felt that there was an overt threat or the potential of one, and that's all we need. That's the sad comment here, is that there was an apparent threat that caused a single employee to say, "I don't feel safe. Would you mind if we have one of the police stand by just in the event that a number of people were to show up, or the meeting were to get out of control?"
To an open meeting?
Fortunately, none of that happened.
I'm just making sure I have another record. An open meeting?
There's lots of open meetings where police attend, Nancy.
This is simply out of an abundance of caution for the welfare of the individual involved, that's all.
I find it really, actually, quite questionable.
What is questionable?
We just gave you your answer, why it happened.
What is questionable, though?
That anybody would feel that threatened by a couple of nurses, who actually, you know what's really interesting? You know, the Pew Research, I don't know how long they've been in business for, 60 years? Every year, you know who's voted the most trustworthy profession? Nurses.
I don't think it's a question of...
And, and the only year we weren't number one was the year after 9/11. The firemen got us down to number two, but that was only for a year.
So were you somehow in fear of the police officer that was present at your meeting?
I thought it was rather odd that a police officer would stand behind board members.
Police officer didn't...
I think you just want to stay off the camera, not be the center of attention.
I don't think it was any more than that.
That's how I read it.
Well, as Lucy would say, there's some explaining to do.
We just did.
Okay.
We would do the same for any board that felt the same way.
Any board can request the police, not even a board or an attendee at that meeting can request an officer.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other further public comment? Yes, stand up, give us your name and...
Beth Sharland, I wanted to let you know that I would be resigning from the Board of Health effective as soon as I'm done speaking, and I want to explain why I'm doing that. I have deep roots in this town, I was born and raised here, I left to get educated and married and had some kids, and came back to raise my children here. So when the opportunity came out to be on the Board of Health, I was eager and excited to give back to my community. I thought I might be able to add something, and I had a great year and a half collaborating with my fellow board members and the Health Division employees. The meetings were great, there was a lot of interesting things going on, and we were really getting some things done. But since January, that changed. As we got close to passing tobacco regulations, there became an adversarial relationship between the Board and the Board of Selectmen and the Town Management. We were interfered with and thwarted at every turn. The culmination of this was last Tuesday night. It felt like we were on trial for our concerns about the new health agent. It was the most horrible experience I've had at a committee meeting in my career, and I've been on a few committees. It was toxic. It became clear that my time and opinions as a member of the Board of Health were not valued, and frankly, I don't have a lot of free time, so I have to use it judiciously. Last Tuesday, there was concern expressed about the public health of Reading. Since January, as Nancy mentioned, we've lost our health agent, our health inspector of 20 years, and our public health nurse. The latter two left as a consequence of the hiring of Laura Vlasic. Three very qualified people left because they were working in an unsupportive work environment. This is firsthand information, I've spoken to all three of those people that left. This is where time and attention needs to be spent, not putting your volunteers on trial. Volunteers are a great resource for this town, but only if you use them effectively, not as rubber stamps, but as dedicated advisors with unique areas of expertise. These boards were put in place to create a broader range of thoughts. That's what makes a healthy town and a successful government. Thank you for listening, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to have served my town for the past two years. Thank you.
Beth, let me say thank you for your service.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments from the Board? Will we take another comment? Any other public comment? Yes, please stand, announce your name, so folks at home know if you're speaking.
Rebecca Ziberman, Fifth and Pratt Street, I appreciate the fact that you're going to discuss raising of fees, because I think we need alternatives to an override. I've suggested many, many times and many ways that we could raise fees easily and painlessly. We need to stop holding teacher positions hostage, and the funds that we do have, we need to spend wisely and demonstrate to our, to the town residents that we are, that we care and spend money appropriately. People were really, I went to a lot of the listening sessions, and I was listening. My impression is that folks are very supportive of paying for education, but they don't like the idea of an override that where funds cannot be earmarked past year one. And this was going on at the same time that there were plans to build big budget projects, the DPW Garage, a multimillion dollar early childhood center. And none of that, none of the budget woes in the education budget came up at the time that these big projects were being put on the table. So I just want to, want to say lastly that teachers and public safety officers have to be the number one priority. If that means cutting, cutting drama, cutting athletics, whatever it takes, but teacher positions can't be on the table. Otherwise, we're going to have a low morale, constant turnover. We're already seeing some of the, some of the fallout from what happened with the threat to the teacher positions at the middle school level. And my son is currently in a class of 34 kids. I mean, this is not the town that we want to be, so I just want everyone to keep that in mind, and I'll just remind you, I've spoken in public meetings before, that when our town manager asks, "What things could we cut?", well, let's, let's end free leaf pickup, we can pay for that, let's raise the cost of a dump sticker. Why should there be free parking at Reading Memorial High School when the bus costs so much? We could maybe earmark the funds for a late bus and ease the burden on families where the cost is $4.50 per child with no family cap. I know, I've paid for two kids for several years, and, and it's like subsidizing families who have cars. I have lots of other suggestions I could make for fees, and I, as some people have said, "Well, it won't plug the entire budget hole." Okay, but maybe we could go for a smaller override. And as also the town manager said in a meeting last year, and he was absolutely right, we have to show that we've turned over every rock, but the teachers need to be on a pedestal away from that rock. They can't be worried every year, otherwise, we had several teachers quit the day before school started. This is just unfair to our children, and we can't do this. Thank you so much.
Comments? Barry?
Becky, thanks so much. It's, basically, that's our work schedule over the next year, and as you know, this Board is going to, working with the school committee, working with the trustees, are going to be turning over every rock and trying to come up with a budget that works. But as you know, from going to the listening sessions last year, no amount of fee increases is going to plug the budget gap that we have. And we're not going to raise fees just so we, so that we, just because we can. We have to look at fees in a way that makes sense and not just say, "Okay, we can raise it, let's just raise it." We have to look at the cost of covering that, that service, and there may be some people who would think, "Okay, I'm for raising the fee a ton of money at the, you know, so I can park at the depot." Those are the folks that might not park at the depot. So we have to look at everybody, everybody's needs, everybody's wants, before we move forward. The other thing, too, that's really important, and this Board of Selectmen is not going to be able to change state law, which basically is that when you do an operational override, the money is only earmarked for year one. We can say as much as what we like, and I think that this Board has done it, and the school committee has done it as well, to say that if we have the funds going forward, this is what we'd like to spend it on, but unless we want to violate state law, we're not going to say that the funds are going to be earmarked. We can only do that for the first year. So I would welcome your participation and to stay engaged and to stay involved, but we have a structural deficit that's going to require an override one way or the other. So we're going to look at fees, one of the things we're going to look on is tonight. We're looking at, at the depot fee, there's others, there's others that are in play as well, but we're not going to solve the problem just by raising fees. There's going to be an override put forth, one way or the other, whether it passes or not, that's up to the voters. That is the only way to make sure that what you want, which is teachers, is going to happen. That's the only way.
Becky, I'd also second Barry's, have been amplified a bit. Your comments would be helpful, not just tonight, but throughout the whole process, and not just to this Board, but...
To the school committee.
The school committee, particularly as it comes to prioritization. A lot of times, an individual in the, in the room will have a comment, and it'll resonate with others in the room. They won't stand up and say it, but you'll have crystallized the thought in their mind. And I think you do that very well. I'd urge you to stay involved as the process unwinds here in the fall and as we get into the winter. Thank you very much for your comments, Dan.
Yeah, just want to make one point of correction, Becky, on the DPW Garage. I believe, Bob, that's never really been in the capital plan.
Not with a number, not yet.
It's never been in the plan with a number, there was a conceptual plan done some years ago. I think the people actually raised that as a shibboleth, was the anti-override people. They said, "Oh, look, we have this big project coming up." It was never in the works. It's not now in the works, so that's, that's not one of the big ones. It's living right now.
But the school project was.
It was, and it, but it's pretty much been put to bed, is not going to happen. You're right, though, that was real, that got put on the capital plan. The early childhood.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you for your comments. I certainly agree with virtually all of them. I do want to point out one thing, though, that Mary Ann Downing wrote a very, very well-thought-out email to the Board and actually resent it. And she, she also shared one of your topics, which was parking at the high school. And just for complete clarity's sake, that's an issue that only the school committee can decide. This Board can have an opinion of it, and the school committee does not care. That is, you know, they are in full, if you will, care, control, and custody of their property.
That's interesting, because when I brought up the school committee meeting, they said that any parking fees from the high school would belong to the town. Is that wrong?
Well, when they say "belong to," they may mean collected and put into the general fund to be shared by all. That could be correct. The schools have a lot more, what are called, I don't want to bore everyone, Andre's the only one that's going to like this.
No, but I just...
The schools have a lot of...
Frank, you're right.
Yeah, the schools have a lot of revolving funds, so a lot of the money they collect, for instance, athletic fees, they keep all of it. For parking fees, I don't believe they can keep all of it, they would share it with the whole town. So that's, that's what their comment means.
But the amount is set by them exclusively.
But they have to decide whether or not there is a parking fee, and if so, what are the terms and conditions. And then, you know, if they collect $50,000 at the end of the year, that revenue goes into the general fund, the next year it's shared through the budget process.
So you'd want to go back and have that discussion in terms of the fee level. It goes back to the general fund, so both sides are benefit pro rata, right?
Yeah, and just to amplify what Barry said, you know, he's indeed accurate. Year one, the override can be discussed, it can be worded in a ballot question, and it must be followed. Year two, you can do anything you want. But in point of fact, this community, for at least 12 years, has followed a fairly rigid yet flexible way to allocate funds. We do as good a job as any community in terms of both sides, if you will. Schools in town have full discussions about what their priorities are, and as a rule of thumb, we share them according to a formula. But either side has the ability to step out and say, "This year I have something different. This year I need $100,000 for point X." And quite often, there's been agreement on those. For instance, that's how we hired a school resource officer in the police department. That's how they hired some, you know, public health money, I'm sorry, student health services in the high school. So it's a flexible thing, but it's not that all of a sudden, in year two, something's going to happen that no one could have predicted. That's not how it works, and it hasn't for 12 years at least. And the Finance Committee has a very rigorous process that's followed in that sense.
Mr. Brown?
Phil Brown, Martin Road. One thing that people must or should understand, fees can only cover the cost of operation. You cannot make profit on fees. And also, a fee, it must be voluntarily, unlike a Stonewater management fee, which is a tax. Emerson versus City Boston.
Can you repeat that, Bill? I'm sorry.
Stonewater management fee is a tax.
Yes.
Emerson versus City Boston, 1984, Massachusetts Supreme Court.
What he's saying is it's not discretionary, or his parking is discretionary. You don't have to park.
That's correct.
So it can be a fee.
So you collect fees at the high school for parking, you can only miss the cost of what the cost you have something to look over, and that's all you can make a profit.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments from the public? Thank you. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. One is to make clear, it's up on our website now, but just to say publicly, the September 20th financial forum has been canceled. Again, that was the September 20th, financial forum is canceled. It will be replaced, if you will, by a September 27th FINCOM meeting. There was many reasons for it, one including a conflict with religious holidays, but one of the main concerns was the agenda for the financial forum was really a FINCOM agenda. The issues, all but one issue were not, not for all elected boards to sit through. It's really a financial situation. There will be very much an October 11th financial forum at the library. That has always been sort of the big one, where we really discuss budgets for the next year, and hopefully the town accountant has some clarity on how free cash closed out. So again, no meeting on the September 20th. There will be a FINCOM-only meeting on September 27th, there will be a financial forum on October 11th. And just to be clear, because the Selectmen's calendar keeps changing with travel, the next scheduled Selectmen's meeting after tonight is September 26th. So tonight replaces the meeting that would have originally planned for next week on the 12th.
And the FINCOM meeting of the, weekend of the 25th, that's just FINCOM, it's not FINCOM Board of Selectmen.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
And I'll send you all agendas, anyone's obviously welcome to come, if there's a quorum, we can post you.
Okay.
It's not a problem. The only other thing I had, I wanted to update you from Victor, from our senior tax relief program. They have received 194 applications, and so...
Oh, 50 more since we last met.
Yeah, and so far, they have issued about 10 denials. The Board of Assessors still needs a little bit more information for some of the folks, that's why I say about 10 denials. Of the approved applications, there's a total circuit breaker amount of 182,000 and change. So if, for instance, the Board set a factor of one, it'd be $180,000 shift. Two is your maximum, half is your minimum, so you're looking at a $90,000 or a $360,000 shift. And that's a topic that, again, the Chair and the Vice Chair have listed as goals, to have that discussion, you know, with the assessors and with myself, and we'll be happy to do that. But it was a very successful program. We didn't know, again, we discussed numbers of 500 and 600 last year, we really didn't know, because there's no data that you could prove. I am fairly certain that of the 194, we missed someone, and they're going to be talking to one of their neighbors over the next several months and say, "Well, what is that?" And the other part is, although they didn't run into people, we suspect that those, that there are people who did not file the state circuit breaker, because other communities have run into this issue. You know, it wasn't worth it when it was just a small income tax return. When you possibly double up that and have three times the impact because of property taxes, maybe it's worth it.
So that says next year you could get another uptick?
So I would actually expect an uptick next year. Any new program normally has, you know, you can't communicate with everyone, it's impossible. So I think there would be an uptick.
Well, the good news is, this is not a bad year one start.
No, it's a really good...
If you make any kind of estimate in terms of what next year could be, we'll be almost spot on. Victor, I thought he had a number like between 300 and 600, he thought, is the potential pool.
That's correct.
So this is not far off if you're running forward.
200, no, no, it isn't. And obviously, you know, these, if you will, the neediest 200 seniors, it's going to make a big difference to many of them.
That's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Bob, was there any way to know of the people that were declined? If any of them were declined because their property's in a trust?
I have heard that anecdotally, but I don't know. I can't give you any facts. But when Victor last wrote you a report, I think it was one or two meetings ago, he did cite that as a reason.
But that was the reason for folks not -- he talked to folks before they applied, try to detect that.
Right. Yeah, so that's true. They may not have been rejected. They just, he knew they weren't qualified. That's a good point.
And just one last thing. Do we know, so the 193 folks that came by, do we know sort of what was the single most important factor in getting them to know about it? Was it the Chronicle? Was it the Senior Center?
Don't know.
Was it the website? We don't know.
I don't know. I'm not sure if they asked, honestly. He did, I think, two, maybe three, I'm not sure, meetings down at the Senior Center that were very well received. And I know he got a lot of references from that, if you will.
Good. We certainly got a couple of emails, too, so.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you, Bob.
With that, we have a proclamation for Recovery Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the short version first and then the longer, if you'd like. I move that the Board of Selectmen declare September 2017 as National Recovery Month.
Second?
Read that first and I'll read it.
Yes.
Oh, already did I? Proclamation, National Recovery Month, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas the Board of Selectmen determined that substance use disorders were profoundly impacting the town and our residents, such that they helped establish the Reading Coalition Against Substance Abuse in 2006 to improve community collaboration and reduce substance misuse, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Reading Coalition Against Substance Abuse invite all residents of Reading, Massachusetts, to participate in our local celebration of National Recovery Month. And now, we, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as National Recovery Month in the Town of Reading, and call upon the people of Reading to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme. Join the voices for recovery, strengthen families and communities.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a motion to accept?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Erica, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the proclamation. Thanks to Caitlin and to the town manager for helping to get us on your agenda. We're so appreciative to be able to have this as a recognition of National Recovery Month. We're one of hundreds of communities across the United States that are celebrating Recovery Month. We have a calendar of events that our president, Pat Shannon, is going to be sharing with all of you and with the audience. Just to give you a sense of what we have coming, we will be at the Fall Street Fair this weekend, so we invite all the residents to stop by and see what resources we have. We will be hosting a special event at the Rotary for their luncheon this month. We are hosting Substance Abuse in the Workplace event with the Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce at Fusion Restaurant. We also are going to be working with all of our churches. We have First Congregational Church, as well as the Church of the Good Shepherd in Old South, that are working on blanket making through Project Linus. That is a group that is making blankets, in particular, to go to little ones who may have witnessed an overdose. One of the things that the blankets can provide is a small dose of comfort in a really scary time for them. So, we are very appreciative to our local churches. All of our churches also are working on preventing stigma, and they have some signage posted this month, and they'll also be doing prayers throughout the month. If anyone has lost a loved one to substance abuse, we encourage you to find comfort at your local church. We also are hosting, for the first year in Reading, our Regional Candlelight Vigil and our recovery celebration over at the high school. With our regional partners, that includes Medford, Malden, Melrose, Wakefield, Winchester, Stonemont, and Reading. We are part of a group called the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition, and we annually host an event that celebrates and also remembers those that we've lost. And this year, the event will be held in Reading. So, we invite folks to come down. It's a short ceremony. We'll celebrate those in recovery, and we'll also have a short candlelight vigil, a short walk to remember those that we lost with the Luminaria Walk. And then, to culminate our month, we have our 11th Annual Arcasa Meeting. We have two great speakers planned. Middlesex District Attorney Marion Ryan, who's been on the forefront of opioid prevention. We've been working in partnership with her task force for the last three years. And we also are really pleased to have Dr. Ruth Poty coming. She's a family medicine and addiction medicine specialist. She's been speaking all over the country and is considered to be one of the most well-respected speakers. So, we encourage everyone to come out to whatever event they can come to. If you can't get to an event, we encourage you to go to our website. You can reach us through the town or the school website. We encourage folks to look at the resources we have. Recovery is always possible, and recovery works. So, we just want to say thank you to the board, and also want to say thank you to our board chair, Pat Shannon, also to our secretary, Sherri Van Den Akker, who's here tonight, and Joanne Senders, our media liaison. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you.
Would it be okay, oh, sorry?
Oh.
Erica.
So, I know as the Hospital Trust Fund recently helped with sort of plug some funding gap for a program that you were implementing.
Yes.
As I understand, it was sort of kind of a clearinghouse for folks to be able to actually find the recovery resources that they need. The problem being, people have so many different types of insurance, so they might get a name or to call. They don't take that insurance. They have to wind up calling eight, nine, 10 times. Do you have any sense of how that's working? Have we had any success stories with that? And, you know, is it something that we should consider funding in the future?
We're very excited. We've been working with William James College, which is formerly the Mass School of Provincial Psychology. They run a interface referral service, which we are now contracted to be able to provide to Reading residents. Basically, it's a matchmaking service like you described. Since we launched in late November, 60 families have been matched with services.
That's great.
So, we're really thrilled to see. And we've had all levels of participation, from preschool families all the way to elders. So, we're continually trying to get the word out, but to have 60 families match in the first nine months is considered really strong in comparison to some of the other communities that have the service. And Interface will also be present at our 11th Annual Arcasa Meeting at the end of the month.
That's great.
There's information on our website. It's free for residents. They can use it as many times as they would like. Doesn't matter what the issue is. It can be any mental health concern, any substance abuse concern. They basically do the legwork to match you with three quality licensed providers.
Because that was the hardest thing, is that people maybe want to get into recovery, but they just can't find the right place because there's nobody there kind of assisting it.
What form does that match-up take? Is it a?
It's done over the phone, so there's an intake over the phone. They share what they're looking for, maybe some of the barriers. And then, the licensed clinician who answers the call then says, okay, give me a couple of days. I'm going to do research. We have a database of credential providers, and they will match who has open appointments, who takes their insurance, and who would be the best fit for the, what they're looking for. So, it could be as specific as, my husband is in recovery. As a family, we want to talk through some of this. We're also going through some issues with caring for an elder parent, and my seven-year-old has anxiety. So, you could have all of those things in one family situation. And so, they'd be looking for who's the childcare provider in that, for maybe a child psychiatrist, and then who might be helping the family. And they've been successful in doing everything from outpatient therapy to home care wraparound services for Reading residents. So, we've had folks who've said, I've tried a lot of different things, but this worked for me. So, we're really thrilled to hear, especially for folks that have trouble finding a provider that works for them. It's been really successful in that regard. And they also follow up to see how it worked out. So, they track them.
As you tabulate your metrics, when Arcasa comes back and talks about the year and wrap-up, this might be one, an interesting one to add.
Yes. We'd love to share more about the specifics of who used the service, what they used it for, and all of that kind of stuff. In particular, I know our school psychologists have been very happy to have it, because it's very simple for families to use. Instead of saying, here's a list.
Yeah.
I think this person's good. I'm not sure if they're good. They're saying, here, you're going to talk to a licensed clinician, someone who can work through what you might need. Because sometimes, people don't know what they need. They only know that they're in crisis, or they might need support. But they don't know specifically what they might be looking for, and that's a clinician who is really trained to help draw that out. So, we'd love to come back for a wrap-up.
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
If I could just have a moment.
Sure.
Do you want to talk about that, High School Stonemont event in October?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, I wanted to mention one exciting event that we have coming in October. We hope there's an event that is called Jams for Jake. That was put together by some of our local young people who graduated in 2009.
Jams for Jake.
Unfortunately, we lost a young person in June, who was a great friend of the coalition. His family was very supportive when the coalition was founded. Unfortunately, Jake lost his battle with substance use in June, and his friends have put together a really fabulous music festival that they hope to have in Reading. The permits are kind of working their way through the process. They came and presented to the Arcasa Board of Directors last week, and Bob was able to hear what they had to say. They're very motivated. They've raised $2,000 so far for their event. They've got their logistics in place. They've got a lot of key people. One of the amazing things is that the bands will be playing some of Jake's original music. And also, we'll be having information with local resources, as well as we'll be having guests from Right Turn, which is a creative recovery place in Watertown. In particular, reaches out to musicians who are looking to get into recovery. So, although it's been a very difficult time for his friends as they're grieving his loss, they've chosen to put some of that into action. And we're hoping that the board will hear more about that in one of your future meetings. And we'll be working with Bob through the design review team, because there's a lot of different moving parts to the event. It'll be an outdoor music festival that will happen in Reading.
What timing were you looking at?
It'll be late October.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we're excited about that.
My daughter Margaret, who's 23, was one year younger than Jake. She knew of him, especially for his music. And I asked, do you know about this event? She says, oh, yeah, it's all over Facebook. So, a warning to all --
You better have it.
A warning to all the grown-ups in the room. Kids do everything much better than we do.
Right.
I think it'll be a blowout. I think that attendance will be huge, which is why I offered our services, to really have a full design review process, much like we do for the Fall Street Fair.
What's the target venue? Would it be the performing art venue?
The target venue is Simon's Field. And we've spoken with the arena about using the rare lot for parking. We have to let Reading Hockey know that there might be an event that day, and also talk with St. Alphanatius. But in terms of the event, it wouldn't be on the baseball area. It would be on the backfield. And they have plans to rent all the necessary services that we need, a stage, and porta-potties, and everything that you can imagine. And they have 11 bands already in motion practicing. And there's 11 young people who are on the planning committee, who graduated in 2009, and they've been working really hard behind the scenes. So...
That might be a good one to also get RCTV to.
We were hoping to do that, yes. We'd love to be able to feature that. Yeah, for sure.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board?
Guys are doing their things.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We need to take our vote.
All those in favor of the proclamation, five zero.
Can we present it to you, Erica?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you. Do you mind if I invite my board members?
Not at all.
Come on up. Come on up. Okay. Yeah, that's probably a better time.
Because this summer, I have to be.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Joanne, good work.
Hi, Joanne. Thank you.
Over here.
I am a board member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a picture with me?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
We should probably come around.
Yeah.
Come around either.
You're a loop.
But we're lying.
You guys know the drill, right?
You should enter the proclamation from the front.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, sort of facing it.
Who's receiving?
Okay.
Ready?
One, two, three. Great.
Cut it out?
Yep.
Thank you.
Questions?
I was wondering if there's a way to donate to this Jams, Jake?
Yes, there's a GoFundMe. So, if you would like to donate, it's the GoFundMe under Jams for Jake. And there's also a link on the Arcasa website. Thank you so much.
They funded social security while we're away.
Thank God. Generation obsolescence the form of.
Exactly.
Can we take a quick break? I'm just going to restart my computer.
Okay.
Why don't we take a three-minute?
Five minutes.
Do we take a five-minute recess? Thank you, everybody. Our next topic for discussion is the approval of a 186 Summer Avenue Historic District Preservation. Oh, sorry. My bad. Thank you. Our next discussion is volunteer appointment, subcommittee appointments. The VASC met today at 6:30?
We did. And, well, we interviewed candidates for Climate Advisory Committee, one candidate for one position, so that one's easy, Celeste Crackey, very qualified and interesting, more of an IT information, social media person who's very interested in the environment. So, it's a nice compliment to the folks on the committee, I think. We had two incumbents re-upped for the Board of Cemetery Trustees, Janet Baronian and Olive Hecht, and newcomer, but not really newcomer, Virginia Blodgett, was recommended for the open seat. Council on Aging was a last-minute change. Sally Hoyt had submitted a letter that Caitlin showed us, asking that effectively resigning as a full member, but asking that we appoint her as an associate. And we didn't make that recommendation. I will make that motion. Board of Health, we had two candidates, Kevin Sexton, former selectman, and Heidi Pfeifer, who's a 32-plus-year experienced nurse, was in Reading for many years. She's a little bit new to town politics, but she has a deep interest in the work that the board is doing. In light of the recent resignation of Ms. Sherland, which Laura just told me is official as of now, we are able to fill both those seats this evening.
Okay.
We have two candidates that are very, you felt Heidi was qualified?
Yep.
We didn't vote on her, but?
Very able.
Very good. So...
Do you have a motion?
I do. Will the Board of Selectmen accept the recommendations of the volunteer appointment subcommittee as follows? I'll do them all in one motion. Board of Cemetery Trustees, Janet Baronian, term ending 6/30/20. Olive Hecht, term ending 6/30/20. Virginia Blodgett, term ending 6/30/18. Board of Health, Heidi Pfeifer, term ending 6/30/18. Kevin Sexton, term ending 6/30/20. These are full memberships. And Climate Advisory Committee, Celeste Crackey, term ending 6/30/20. And the new one is Council on Aging Associate Member Sally Hoyt, for a term ending 6/30/19.
Do I have a second?
Can I second if I'm on the table?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, we have a second. Motion made. Any further discussion?
I just have a question about, to Kevin, your, what are your public health, what's your public health background?
I don't have a public health background.
Any other questions?
I don't think that's a requirement, any given that you didn't have one.
Well, I had a background in physiology, toxicology, human health, risk assessment. So, yeah, it was, do you have related human health experience?
Only from being on the board.
I would like to see a, someone with some sort of human health background be appointed to the Board of Health, someone who can understand basic toxicology, basic food safety, things like that, and the science behind it. Because it does come into play at times on the board. You need to understand this.
Could I ask a question for Chair?
Hang on, Dan. You do have one candidate and the existing chair.
Right.
With potentially that skill set.
Right. But ideally, the entire board should understand the underlying scientific issues behind the various health regulations in the state.
John, can I ask you a question? You weren't there for the interview process. What's your degree of comfort with proceeding? I mean, you're the chair. You do have requisite experience in these areas. Is this an area where mentorship can catch people up on things they need to know, or what would you say?
A lot of it just might be procedural, but I do believe that we could probably catch, we could catch them up on that. I do understand the Andy's view of having a background in that, absolutely. I mean, that was one of the reasons that I thought that I would have been of value to the board, because of my background. Whether that would just discourage someone from qualifying, I don't think so.
Okay. There are no formal qualifications in the role, anyway. Just describe.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on the proposed motion? All those in favor of the motion as made by Mr. Ensminger, Roger Hune? All those opposed? Four one, motion passes. Thank you to the volunteers. I think we feel deep debt of gratitude to the folks that take time out, away from their families, times away from their jobs, times away from their vacation, to work on some of the town's problems. It's, doesn't pay very well, but the benefits are great. You get a nice warm feeling out of doing the work. So, again, thank you for your volunteerism. Okay. And with that, we will move on to the discussion of the 186 Summer Avenue Historic District Preservation Resolution. Bob?
Yeah, there's two boards here. I don't know if they're called in the session.
Was, do you know if the meetings fresco posted?
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess I'd be happy to call the Historical Commission. Now, our chair is still away in New Hampshire, and if I can, at least for, since it is a formal meeting, I think we're absent a member. And I know Virginia is here, I would like to appoint Virginia as a regular member in the absence of one of our members.
And I thought.
I would like to appoint John Williams as the Historic Department Director.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it would be most helpful for the selectmen and myself, those who are a little less familiar with the issue, for Ray to give a little bit of a background. I know some of you have gone to these meetings, I have not, some of you have not. So Ray, you could just give us an outline of the scorecard.
I won't go all the way back to the beginning. But as both commissions and the board is aware, are aware, the Historic District Commission did issue a certificate for this project some time ago. And one of the conditions of that certificate was that a historic preservation restriction be placed on the building. Now, historic preservation restriction can exist in perpetuity, but it has to be approved by the Mass Historical Commission. So unfortunately, we, again, it's been like herding cats. So we started with the Mass Historical Commission model, historic preservation restriction. And through the past quite a few months, the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission crafted something based on that model. But included a few things that were deemed to be more suitable for this particular circumstance. And in particular, a historic preservation restriction is typically made enforceable by the Historic Commission. But in this case, since it was attached to a certificate from the Historic District Commission, we wanted to make sure that the Historic District Commission would be able to enforce it as well. So we came up with a version that was acceptable to us, it was accepted by Criterion, it was then sent off to the Mass Historical Commission. They were not happy. So the, in particular, and I never really was able to get to the bottom of this, they wanted the restriction to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen. Now, by statute, both the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission have the authority to accept historic preservation restrictions. And you do not. So if they actually wanted to insist on that restriction, it would require that this go to town meeting, and town meeting could grant you the authorization to acquire an interest in real estate, like, you know, you do from time to time otherwise. So we said, well, that's nutty. And we, so we gave them some pushback. I mean, you know, you have two choices in that situation, just cave and do everything they want, or give them some pushback. So we in fact did give them some pushback. And the result was they offered as a compromise that they would accept the restriction as long as it was approved by the Board of Selectmen. So.
Isn't that what you just said?
No, we said accept it. So one is, one is you own it. Okay? One is you are proving that they own it. Okay?
Which may be technical.
It's all technical stuff, but nevertheless, they have the authority to hold it, you don't. And why Mass Historical doesn't know that, I.
So did they force other boards of selectmen to do the same thing, or?
Well, I didn't ask that question.
Did those boards just cave because they didn't have the time or the energy?
Well, I don't know. I just don't know. But, you know, it's a bit nonsensical, so.
Is there any precedent for this, Ray?
Any precedent for?
For our Board of Selectmen to do this?
To approve it, or to accept it?
Either.
Well, I do know of historical restrictions that have been accepted by the Board of Selectmen, that seem to a town meeting process. But I just don't, you know, this project has just gone around and around and around. And the idea of waiting till November to authorize is just seemed unpalatable. So in July, they gave us those comments, and we gave them some pushback on it. And on August twenty first, they gave us a second round of comments. They said, okay, we'll agree to this thing as long as the Board of Selectmen approve the restriction. In the meantime, Mass Historical adopted a new model agreement. And so they wanted us to reform the original agreement so it matches the new model agreement.
No grandfather?
Well, you know, it can't be grandfathered because we hadn't gotten the other one approved. So, so the new one, the new agreement, the, has a number of provisions involving insurance for the building. And indemnifies the town from damages or injuries related to the existence of the restriction. That's a nice thing, but I have to say, I'm a little unclear how the town could ever.
Be liable.
Be liable, anyway, but fine. So we made those changes as well. Criterion, of course, is very anxious to get this in place so they can get started. They have been very cooperative over the months. But the truth is, we're not done yet. And the reason we're not done yet is we submitted this version to Mass Historical, sadly not till last Friday. And of course, we haven't, they haven't blessed it. The, but because of the board's schedule and the hope, our hope was that we could get every, both commissions and the board to take the proper votes. And Virginia identified two, one is clearly a typo, and one, I think, is a typo in the document. So we'll need to correct those. So I, so the idea here would be to vote to accept it as it is, but to give me the authority to make minor non-substantive changes, minor or non-substantive changes. So we don't have to come back still another time and do this again. And that way, if Mass Historical has something that we consider to be minor, we'll just make the change and have it be executed. But we won't have to hold another meeting and revisit it.
Are there any comments by the Historical Commission or the Historic District Commission?
Just Jonathan Barnes, by the way. Historical Commission, thank you. Some of us are on both. And I don't know if anybody else has. We obviously, we only saw this for the first time today, so, and it's a very lengthy document to get through, and it was kind of hard. I actually put it side by side with the earlier documents. So I guess I would ask if, I'm not sure whether you're seeking to have either of the commissions, but in our case, the Historical Commission, accept this tonight, or can we vote on this? We have a meeting coming up on September thirteenth. As I said, I have no idea what the feelings are of the other commission members, but my sense is, seeing a document like this, which we've been over many times, and is some thirty odd pages. Some of us, myself included, would probably have a better comfort level if we had the opportunity to read through it a little bit more deliberately. I would also ask, Ray, if I can, we received, I noticed that this was on the selectmen's agenda last week for this. And we received a copy last week of what we, I think we all understood was the document. And looking at it, it turned out to be very different, very divergent from what we had understood, and very divergent from what we saw today. So just having said that, I would at least, and now we have a hard copy.
What we sent?
What he's talking about today was the thing that was sent on Friday by your board.
Yeah, so I'm pretty sure that.
We only finished it on Friday, you know.
Yeah, but that is the correct one, and last week's was not, but I guess all I'm saying, I'm just speaking for myself.
Okay.
I took a look at what I got this morning electronically, against what I know we had initially voted on and approved in the joint commission. I would sort of like a comfort level that what I'm looking at here, if your intention is to have us vote on this, and if the commissions see fit to do that, I would at least want to have a better comfort level. That what, since we just got this, I would want to make sure that it is, in fact, the same thing that we got this morning electronically. I'm just speaking for myself.
Okay, so I don't think that that's a problem. We initially told Criterion's lawyer that selectmen were meeting on the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. And they said, oh, please, please let it be the twelfth because we don't wait on the way to the twenty-sixth. And then no sooner was the email sent than Bob said, oh, by the way, it's not the twelfth, it's the fifth. So then we really had to scramble to get it done. But if you're going to meet on the thirteenth, I think that's okay.
Can I just ask, I mean, what the consensus is, or commission, since this is a joint meeting? We've not had any opportunity to discuss this other than right now. Does anybody else on the commission, on the Historical Commission, I assume Everett, you may want to ask the same question of yours? So you want to hold off until the thirteenth?
So do both, both commissions have meetings on the thirteenth?
No, I know the Historical Commission has a meeting on the thirteenth.
Yes.
We set up a tentative one, I don't know from the date, September eighteenth.
We won't be back till the twenty-sixth, so they both get it done.
Is there anything?
Was there any reason selectmen can't do it tonight?
I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it. I think that these two boards should act first, and then we can, would you say, I think that's the right order, Ray?
Otherwise, you're proving something that hasn't been accepted or can't get there.
We want them to be comfortable and do all their vetting.
Is there anything that's in the agreement, in this draft agreement, that's different than what was negotiated with Criterion? From what I read, it was just more of, just more of language that just sort of cleaned up who was actually responsible. Is there any substantive changes in the agreement with the town and Criterion?
Well, the agreement is more specific about activities that are prohibited. There, as I indicated, there, they, it requires Criterion to maintain insurance and to indemnify us. That was not in the original.
That's a good thing for the town.
That's a good thing for the town, that's right. And whereas the previous agreement said it could be amended by mutual agreement, it now has a whole process that would need to be followed.
From my perspective, Selectmen, I agree that, first of all, there have been numerous iterations of this document. I mean, it was as a result of the initial meeting, the joint meeting with the two historical entities, that gave rise to the inclusion of the Historical District Commission as having authority. We went through several iterations thereafter till we finally reached agreement. This is very, very similar to the last version, which we approved, although I would say I agree. There are whole provisions in it towards the end that we'd never seen. I didn't have much issue with them, and I doubt that others on the commission do either. All I know is, I, and I would also say, some of the attachments were not there. I'm sure they're exactly the same, but perhaps it's the lawyer in me. But I don't, I don't want to sign, nor do I want to bind our successors in perpetuity to a document that we have not carefully at least read. Particularly in light of the fact that we've seen different versions as recently as last week. I just want to have a comfort level, and I presume I speak for others, that this is, in fact, the same document.
Any other comments from the board? So it seems the most expeditious path is to defer the approval to acceptance tonight.
Yeah, their approval.
Our approval.
Your approval.
Their acceptance.
You're going to defer your approval to your next meeting, give them a chance to defer to accept.
Struggling over the alphabet now. So we'll defer our approval till the twenty-sixth, whereupon both boards will have a chance to review and digest. And I presume they'll also have time, if there's any questions, to go through a round of emails to clarify those.
Oh, boy.
Eric Blodgett, Chair, for the Historic District Commission. I'll make an effort to get the commission, the HBC, to have a joint meeting with the Historical Commission on the thirteenth. I'd schedule it, see if the core there is different. That way, that would free up, and we get the interchange there. It's the interchange that's the, understanding how it's going to work. My major concern is that the Criterion being treated as failing in relationship with the rest of the district. That when decisions are made, looking at what's been done in the rest of the district, that they be treated the same way we want the district to be treated. And so it takes time to look through the document and understand how that's going to work.
Okay.
In relationship to the Historical Commissioner there also.
So two questions, as you sit here tonight, Everett, do you know any reason why that goal isn't achieved? Or no, that's just a focus as you go forward?
Well, that's the focus as we go forward anymore. Initially, there was a concern to me because the Historical Commission had the final say. And you've got two different commissions controlling the exterior of the buildings. And I'm not sure exactly how that works.
The only concern I would have is that if you meet on the thirteenth, that it's likely there's any fallout or any questions, you'll have to meet a second time. So that on the twenty-sixth, it's all, it's one document, both groups are already signatories or virtual signatories, and that the.
What we're doing is proving.
Oh, the approval is automatic, as opposed to tonight where folks haven't even read it.
I guess the other question I would ask is, can we at that meeting or at separate meetings, put out the vote then to approve the document? And then we don't have to have a all encompassing, three partnership meeting again?
Bob?
If these boards can meet jointly and only meet one, and they only need to meet the one time when they're all agreement, I can pull the selectmen and meet as soon as possible after that with a single agenda item, if three of you can make it. But I suggest you discuss this a little more tonight to see if you're comfortable with that approach, that as long as they're in agreement, that you would be in agreement with that. So that at a moment's notice, for instance, three of you might meet before the twenty-sixth.
Then the only caveat?
Yes, forty-eight hours.
Well, the way government works, forty-eight hours.
I guess the only caveat is if there are changes from what the document we reviewed over the weekend. I'd like a chance to peek at those as well.
Okay, well, if they actually can approve it on the thirteenth, then you'll have some time to do that.
Yep.
I will attempt to get Eric Russell from my office to that meeting.
Right.
If, so Eric is the person in my office who's actually been involved in all the drafting of this, and working with the two commissions. I can't promise his time because he's not here to defend himself, but.
Is that the best time?
But, and it does look like he has something in the late afternoon in the city, in Boston. So as long as he don't have to meet at six thirty, I think he'll probably be able to do it. But I should, I should probably verify that with him, rather than just say, oh, sure, he can make a seven thirty.
So I actually have jury duty that day.
Oh, boy.
I'm assuming I'll be, I will not be seated.
He'll be sequestered.
Virginia, did you have a question?
Yes, Virginia, I was a member of both commissions. And I had an opportunity to read the hive copy, as I received my copy early today, coming down to town. And I can see no substantial changes that would make either commission nervous. So I think we've got a document that's very close to, shall I say, perfection?
Well, you found two typos, so.
It's closer now.
She said close to perfection.
Okay. All right, very good, so that's our plan of record. You guys will meet on the thirteenth and we'll reconvene on the twenty-sixth on the question. Sorry to have you come in, but we got this covered, thank you anyway.
Thank you.
You do during your meetings.
Will we take a minute here while we're in the meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah.
Tonight, a few other questions, but I'd hope, which I'd hope to ask tonight, but, um, I'll be somewhat constrained. But, um, I'll go around the room if there's any other comments the board wanted to make or any other questions they wanted to raise. Turn to my right, John?
Um, you know, I've, I heard a lot of things, I've had the opportunity to read a lot of things since the last time. So, um, I think I have the facts that I can go forward with this discussion, but I have nothing to add this time.
Dan?
Uh, Sam here and also weighing the late breaking events of this evening into the proper path forward, still wrestling with that a bit.
Andy?
Yeah, um, you know, I served on the Board of Health for five years and I think one of the reasons I chose to run for the Board of Selectmen, though I think was. Uh, that I was concerned, uh, and John Halsey was our liaison at the time and, 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 and put a nice phrase on it. I, I, I stated at the time, I felt encroached upon, or I felt that the Board of Health purview was being encroached upon by, uh, Town Hall and the, um. And the Board of Selectmen, and, and I think last Tuesday's meeting was another example of that. And statements by, uh, the, the board during the, the, um, fruit flavor tobacco regulations that we put through. Pointing to, uh, the power, using the power of appointment, if you, if you were diss- dissatisfied with the direction that the Board of Health was going in. And I, and I, uh, I really think it is important to, uh, keep the Board of Health, um, somewhat protected from town politics. And, uh, the Board of Selectmen, I think we appoint them because they are professionals in the field and, and that we should, we should trust them. So, I, I want, I think this is an unwise path and as I'm, you should probably, I can't anticipate, um, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about the path that we're taking on. The other thing is that I think the, the last week's meeting, if you wanted to get at answers, I think was not a good forum to get at those kind, at those, those answers. I mean, I know that if, if I was, um, if, if I was sitting there being asked questions by the town council, um, I'd probably be a bit nervous. And, and might not be, maybe a little worried about being forthcoming about all of my reasons and the history involved. Also, um, uh, I, I, I think that it, it's unfortunate, I think this all started two and a half months ago or something like that. Um, and, and I was at that meeting where, where the, the board, uh, considered appointing, uh, the new hire as their designate. And, um, I haven't seen, and maybe there has been unknown to me, but I haven't seen Everett. It seems like it was something that could, where we should've sat down with the Board of Health, or some of us should've sat down with the entire Board of Health. And hashed this out in a meeting to try to get, uh, sort of some sort of agreement. Understand what their concerns were and more, and more depth, uh, upfront. Um, and then I, I think positions just got entrenched after that. Um, I know the, it was at a, the first meeting I was at and the, the town's health agent decided not to give the Board of Health the health reports for the month. Now, having been on the Board of Health, we, we have to have, they have to have, we at the town, those health reports to make sure that state law, um, is being met. And that, and that, and that the public health is protecting the town. So, uh, that, that caused me some concern, that it took a while for, that those health reports were not forthcoming by the hi- the new hiry in the, in the health division. So, and I could go on and on, I'm sure you don't wanna listen to me ramble, but, um, those are some of the current concerns that I have. And, and, and again, I, I, I think this is not a, a, a good precedent to set. I think that it sends a strong message to other volunteer boards, committees, commissions, that if they do not behave in a way that the Board of Selectmen like. They could be hauled in and, and, and put to a similar question.
Yeah, I, I have to stop you there.
Sure.
You, you can't put those words in any of our mouths. It has nothing to do with what we like, in my opinion. And I would hold someone whose personal preference guided their professional judgment as, as having a problem.
Mm-hmm.
We don't do this because we like to do it, as I certainly don't, I won't speak for the rest of you. Um, I think we do this out of a sense of duty and out of a last resort. And the circumstance, as you pointed out earlier, has been going on for some number of months. The Board of Health has the responsibility, as the primary health, uh, point of contact. And it delegates that right to a daytime government resource known as the health agent. Until they make that appointment, the Board of Health retains that responsibility. So, in doing so, it puts itself in the position of having to respond without a resource to do it.
I, yeah, I, I have to respond to that, I, I don't.
I just am responding to the comment that we would, that a board would, would haul individuals in to use, to say as you said, because we don't like it.
Because, I mean, there was no, there didn't seem to me any effort from the get-go to work with that board, so that's the perception, that's how I see it.
Okay. But I can't, I can't square that comment with your earlier comment, which is provide a hands-off approach. You're now describing that we should work with them in a hands-on fashion.
I think if you would like to get involved in Board of Health matters in that way.
I'm just, I'm responding to your comment.
There's a, there is a good way to go about doing it.
Let me go around the table, Barry.
So, I think of all the two years that I've been on the Selectmen, this issue has been probably the most troubling for me personally that I've seen. Um, I've been a volunteer in this town for twenty-odd years. Um, and I've worked with hundreds of other volunteers in this town for twenty-odd years, all of whom don't earn a dime, all of whom have better things to do. Um, and.
Different things to do.
Different, different things to do. Um, and, and, and people do it out of sort of a labor, a love for their town, that, we're a richer town for it. Um, you know, I worked in the city of Boston and, you know, if the mayor of the city of Boston wanted something, it happened. If the mayor of Boston didn't want something, it didn't happen, end of story, you can have all the volunteer you want. This is a much different form of government. That said, the fact that we are pretty much a government of volunteers with a, with a pretty thin, as you all know, daytime staff. It becomes incumbent upon us to do things the right way. You know, listening to that, to that discussion with the Board of Health and with Ray and, and with us the other night. Um, I, I, I really couldn't believe what I was hearing. Um, and what it really came down to me, um, you know, augmented by, you know, some of the emails that we have gotten. Was really, um, a shoving contest between a board that wanted to have a say in hiring a daytime government person. Uh, not just to say, but to actually be the decision maker. Um, and the town, with our charter that basically says, it's the town manager's right and responsibility to appoint the health agent. And, and so, round and round and round it about it went for, for, for months. Um, when it, and Ray's memo was crystal clear that the Board of Health, as much as it probably wants to, it has a, has a close working relationship with the agent. Does not have the ability or the authority to hire the person that will be the agent. They have an obligation and a duty to appoint that person to do the business of the board during, um, periods of time where they're, where they're not meeting. And it just seemed to me that, you know, while we are volunteers, if I, I work for a bank. If, if the chief legal counsel of the bank told me my way of originating loans was wrong. Um, and that it posed the bank reputational risk and a risk that, that, that the pos- the depositors funds. And I continue to keep trying to do that, I would be fired, no ifs, ands or buts, I would be fired. And just because the fact that we're a group of volunteers, I think we're, should be held to the same standard of how we would do our D to J jobs that we actually get paid for. And what I saw was, um, a disagreement about who have the authority to hire the health agent. And when told that they do not have the authority to hire the health agent, they continued a, a, a back, you know, backdoor way to try to hire their own person. By withholding the appointment and using, to me, what seemed like a flimsy excuse of a five-dollar charge on, uh, on a travel report. Um, you know, we've got a lot of important things to do. Um, and, and so, you know, we wasted a lot of time and a lot of energy, um, and, and caused a lot of, um, anxiety. By basically, um, by the board not following the town charter. So, no one values volunteerism more in this town than I do. Um, I, I, I think that we're richer for it. Um, but that, just because we're volunteers, doesn't mean that we act in asylum. It means that we all should be rowing in the same direction, the mission of reading and not using these things as a way, um, you know, to kind of, you know. Because we think we could, you know, a, 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 a board thinks they have a better way of doing it. It broke my heart to hear Beth Shroen resign. She's a dedicated person, she works hard, um, and how we got here, I, you know, I, I think we have to do a really deep post-mortem on this. And maybe it's up to us as the board to kinda say, okay, we're appointing you to do this role. But maybe we need to get people together on different boards to say, you know, what's the mission of the town of Redding? What is it that we're trying to do? Not to get involved in people's sandboxes, certainly not. Um, but, but just to kinda basically, um, once you're appointed to a board, you know, yes, you're responsible for, for working on that board. And you have your rules and your regulations on that, but it's also important to understand what you're doing for the town of Redding. Um, and to, and, and in my view, I, I, unless someone can give me evidence of the contrary. Um, you know, members of the board tried to, you know, subvert the hiring process. And the result, I think, left this town vulnerable. That's just not acceptable. Um, but I hope that we can work, that we can figure out ways that we can bring boards together. You know, that's just my view from this perch here. I wasn't the liaison, I wasn't on the board out. Um, but, you know, that's how I see it and, you know, I, 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 I wanna find a way out of this, I wanna move the Board of Health forward, they have a lot of work to do, so.
Why did you say that they tried, they tried to change the hiring process?
Hang on, hang on, Ed, Bob?
Uh, thank you, I just wanna, you know what I'm about to say, but I wanna make sure I say it publicly. Um, since I've been town manager, the hiring process for the Board of Health has been very inclusive, even though it's not required by the charter. I am the sole hireer of my charter. When Andy was Chair, we had a committee that hired, and you've heard a little about that. What you may not know, and I normally wouldn't go here, is, um, when we had the prior hiring process, we hired Andy's top choice. We offered the job to Andy's top choice, not mine. That's how strongly the group of, of volunteers got together and worked and, and employees. And I was, I voted whatever it was to one, that there was a better choice than my choice. I could've just said, too bad, I'm going with my choice. I didn't. I, I, I accepted the will of the majority, if you will, and especially the expertise in the room. And we made an offer to the other fellow who ended up turning it down, and we ended up hiring, if you will, the second choice. Uh, in this go-round, again, I offered to the Chair or any one member to be, uh, you know, present and participate in that hiring process. Uh, both the Chair and myself sat in on exactly one round of interviews at the very end. Um, he could not have been any stronger for agreeing with the choice that was unanimous about the person we hired. Um, so I just wanna make sure the record is clear, that this is not an autocratic town manager doing whatever he wants. I'm an extremely inclusive, open-door guy for almost all matters. I do have responsibility at the end of the day, sometimes in tough calls, and I will make those. Um, but the hiring process is, is I, as I've said to the board in the past, I think it's the single most important thing I do. And as some of you know from being included in some of the hiring processes, I like other input, I value other input. So just to be clear, the Board of Health did have a very important role in both of those hires. Uh, but the whole board cannot, because the process of applying for a job must be confidential. We advertise it as such, as soon as a second member, including an associate member of the Board of Health, stepped into a hiring process, it becomes a public matter. And that's why, after repeated requests for them to join in the hiring process, I kept trying to explain, no, because it's a confidential process. And the Chair has decided to act on your behalf. So I just wanted to make sure that part was clear.
Andy?
I'm, I'm confused, um, as I recall, the Board of Health was not trying to challenge Bob's hiring authority. Um, rather, I think they were following, uh, Town Charter bylaws, Bill, you'll have to help me here if I'm, uh, off-base. But I think where, so, so I don't, I'm, I'm confused as to where you got the idea that the, that the Board of Health wanted to fire or not hire. Or reverse the hire of, or, or change, challenge Bob's hiring authority. It was their appointment, um, at which is per the bylaws or charter, that they, that they, that they have a right to. They may appoint a designate or they may appoint, uh, an agent on their behalf. But that's where the, the, the sticking point was. Um, I don't think they were trying to take over the hiring process, I, at least I never heard of it.
Yeah, I, I think that's a symptom of a problem, not necessarily.
I understand.
If you look at things sometimes as, um, inputs rather than outputs, it's not, it's, it's an issue in its own right, but it's part of a larger, uh, pattern. You start to see, you start to see things differently.
By the way, I mean, they ha- when they appoint, the Board of Health answers to the state law. And they, when they appoint somebody, they have to trust that person to represent them legally.
But in this case, the town manager has the sole exclusive prerogative to hire.
Sure.
And they have a requirement to appoint.
Not our, yeah, is there, it, I don't, is there, I didn't, couldn't find a requirement to appoint in the Town Charter or bylaws.
It's in Ray's letter.
No, there isn't.
Is there a requirement?
Ray opined in his letter of July seventeenth that they ought to do the appointment.
But are they required to?
So, the, the state law simply authorizes it, and so you, you were looking in the wrong place if you were looking at the charter.
Yeah. It was also, yeah, yeah.
You, you should've been looking at the statute.
I get them all jumbled together.
It authorizes the appointment to be made.
Right.
The, the idea of this appointment is, public health, unlike most other kinds of things that, that come up before the town. Requires, often requires some kind of an immediate response.
Correct.
And, um, uh, it's not always possible for the Board of Health to, um, exercise its power.
Mm-hmm, as a board.
Uh, as a board.
Yeah.
Conveniently, or, you know, quickly enough.
Yeah.
Um, uh, that, you know, they have to find when people can meet and, you know, they're volunteers, as you note, they work and whatever.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
So, the law says, and this is unique for the health agent. The law says that all of the power of the Board of Health can be, and can be delegated to an agent. Who can exercise it as if that agent were the Board of Health.
Right, right.
And, um, so it's, uh, so it's a unique authority, but it's something that, that's critical to the operation of, of the public health process.
Yes. Yeah.
You know, unless the, the Board of Health is gonna sort of meet constantly to, to address things.
Yeah.
So, it is, it is certainly not required that they, that they delegate that authority to anybody in particular.
Then they own it.
But they, they either need to, if, if they're not going to delegate it to, uh, somebody, then you're left with the problem that. then you're left with the problem that there is no, nobody with the requisite authority to respond in certain, certain senses.
Right, yeah, and I, I understand that they were, they, they were delayed in appointing somebody because they wanted to work things out. That's at least what I picked up from the meetings.
I want to go around the table, I want to make sure we all, Dan?
I really want to say more than I probably can say here. Bob, can we say anything about the HR study that examined leakage of information of the candidates?
The only thing about HR that I feel that I can say, and Ray's not going to like it either, but just for clarification of everyone, we have two attorneys. We have an HR specialist, if you will, and we have town council. On occasion, they're both on the phone with me, that's, that's pretty rare. I feel comfortable enough, and I generally don't like to talk about HR because it's not public, but I will tell you and tell the public that the letter, after the public health nurse resigned, that she sent out, did come into my possession at some point, along with a request to have a legal review. That is HR, that is labor council, that is not town council. Labor council told me that the town, that myself, had no standing with a former employee to question the former employee. Case closed, we could not do it.
Just because she's a former.
Because she's a former employee, we did not dismiss her, we did not terminate her, we did not leave with any bad sense that if she wished to talk to any of us, of course, we were welcome to do it. But he said, under no circumstances should you or any employee of this town contact that employee to ask her questions.
Including any member of any board?
That's correct.
Who are technically employees of the town.
That is correct. So I, I don't like saying that in public, because it's an HR issue and it doesn't, it's not the business of the public. But in this instance, I feel obliged to say it.
Yeah.
We are taking care of our HR responsibilities here, even though I can't always tell you the details.
Right, there's a lot going on. To amplify a little bit what Barry said, we, we are so dependent and so thankful for our volunteers. And fortunately, it's rare that it's necessary to, to speak to a volunteer. Most folks are willing to listen to a chair or to spend some time understanding the office and come up to speed. But where circumstances dictate it, it's our, it's incumbent on our responsibility to use the resources and the recourse that's given to us in the charter and the bylaws.
Right.
And while we should be reluctant to do so, we shouldn't be resistant to doing it, when it's appropriate. And in this circumstance, given the facts that have been discussed here, and some of which we can't talk about here, it's wholly appropriate to have this discussion. This was delayed, but I don't think we can deny it any longer. I'm thankful for their service, and I mean that sincerely. These people care about what they do. It's simply that the path they were going down wasn't one that the town could entertain any longer. And so, the discussion we had last week had to happen, and the discussion we're having tonight has to conclude. Any last closing comments?
I have one.
John?
At the risk of being redundant, and I do not want to be redundant, I do want to say that I think that Barry articulated exactly the way I feel about this situation, from the top to the bottom. And frankly, you know, we, we found ourselves in a very difficult position, and it is our responsibility to fix it. And I think we need to do that. I, I, I thought that Barry's comments were well-placed and reflect my, my feeling on the subject very precisely.
Thank you, John. If there are no other questions, I do have one or two comments for the chair of the Board of Health. John, you were, yeah, he's way in the back. You were party to the, to meetings where the health agent candidates were discussed. And as Ray mentioned, or I think Bob might have mentioned it, you were in, in favor of the ultimate decision.
Yes, I was.
There was no formal vote taken, but you were in favor of it.
Correct, there was no vote.
Okay. In the Board of Health meetings, which you did chair, how many, how many opportunities did you either ask for a motion or make the motion yourself?
I think I made the motion twice to appoint.
And did you ask others in other meetings to, to move above and beyond those two?
In other meetings outside of public?
You can either make the motion directly or ask for a motion. If you, if you made it directly twice, were there others where you asked for it to be made?
I believe I just asked, I made two motions.
I think you did on the 16th, you're forgetting the 16th.
I did.
Okay, so on two or three?
Yeah, what I read was, you asked for a motion, none came. And you made a motion, twice.
I did ask for a motion.
Three separate occasions. You tried to initiate, you know, a movement towards appointment. That's what I read in, you know, my reading of the minutes.
And, and what was the reaction of the Board of Health members present to the request, either the motion or the request for a motion? What was the, was there no discussion?
Well, there was no second. I did, I do remember discussing that I did bring the, the issue that we're here tonight for to the town manager. And I thought I got a reasonable response from the town manager that would allow me to feel comfortable making a motion to appoint.
Will you, did you attempt to mediate any of the differences among the members, or?
We didn't really do much as far as HR talk. We were kind of told we weren't allowed to speak of that.
Right, but in terms of trying to get to a motion, did you try to bridge any of the gaps, or was it simply not possible to get them comfortable with the thought of making a motion?
Well, as I said.
John, maybe, keep in mind that the Board of Health is only three members.
I understand.
So, the only communications that can exist between the members has to be at, at a meeting. So, this unfortunately is, is a circumstance where the, where the open meeting law sometimes gets in the way of, you know, resolving issues like that.
I did through, through Gene.
Yeah.
Give my opinion of the importance of having a health agent.
Okay, thank you.
A technical point on that, one way John has communicated with his board members is to send a communication to Gene, who then blind copies it to the other two. Does that constitute a deliberation or not, if the communication's only one way from him to them? If it's?
You don't really want me to answer that question right now, do you?
I know. Is there any way that can be done without?
Is that material to the, to the next?
It depends on the subject matter.
All right.
If it's not meeting logistics, I guess I'd say, then you'd stray into dangerous territory.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all the questions I had. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll, I'll move to a motion.
Well, you want to talk about the procedure you've thought through here?
Yeah, so, the process here is we're, we're going to make two motions following the resignation tonight and ask the board to vote on the removal of the two remaining.
Not the removal.
To, to?
I'm sorry, for hearing, for a hearing, thank you.
To actually, issue a notice of removal to the town clerk.
Issue a notice of hearing which is conducted on the 26th of August.
Right.
Thank you.
September 26th.
September 26th, time is flying.
All right, Mr. Chairman, may I offer both at once so they could both be discussed together?
Sure, actually, no, let's do them, let's do them separately.
All right. Mr. Chairman, move to file a notice of removal with the Redding Town Clerk pursuant to section 8.12.1.1a of the Redding Home Rule Charter for the following individual holding the following office. John Costigan, Chair of the Board of Health. The reasons cited for the proposed removal are as follows. One, failure to act on the appointment of the health agent Laura Blasek as the authorized agent of the Board of Health. Two, pursuing lines of questioning and taking individual actions and votes regarding Ms. Blasek that have exceeded the Board of Health's lawful duties and powers under the Massachusetts general laws and the Redding Home Rule Charter and bylaws.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second for the motion?
So, I think we have to have a second so that we can have a discussion.
Correct.
So I will second it so that we can have a discussion.
Okay, we have a motion that's seconded, any further discussion on the motion?
Could you explain this? I, I think we've talked about the, the first one at length, and I, I understand I'm outgunned. But on the second one, could you explain that to me in more detail?
There, these motions have all been made a town council suggestion identically. I do not believe the second part applies to Mr. Costigan. And I do not believe he willfully failed to act. So, this is more of a motion being made to dispense with the situation in terms of Mr. Costigan. I'm going to vote against the motion, because I don't think either of these points was made. But it, it's, it's simply here a town council suggestion as a common format for each of the three.
But to answer the question directly, this is exceeding the authority that granted to the Board of Health? Is the, is the reason given in the?
So if they don't apply to John, why are they here?
I don't know what the will of the board is, we just had a hearing.
You don't believe they apply to John, vote against the motion.
No, but who, who, who made, who penned the motion?
The request of the, the board, this board, was to understand what reasons would apply to removal of any or all of members of the Board of Health. Working with town council, there are two obvious ones. One is the failure to act on the appointment, which is a de facto statement. And the second is pursuing lines of questioning and exceeding authority, which we've heard tonight.
Right, I, I just, this is the, I didn't know that we were pursuing the, we discussed them at a previous meeting and I was not paying attention?
I have no idea.
If we discussed them at a previous meeting, this, these, these topics?
Not between our last meeting and tonight, no.
So, this is a clarification question. So if we vote positively on this, this is just to have a hearing?
Correct.
If we're voting this, we're not removing any individual?
But you're issuing a notice of removal to the town clerk, which would be, have to be timely filed tomorrow to, to, to start a 20-day clock, that would, the earliest we could have the hearing would be the 21st then.
26th.
I'm sorry, 26th. At that point, in accordance with the bylaw, the person for whom the notice was registered would be able to offer defense to these reasons. They could even bring counsel, they could bring witnesses, anything they want. So it's really, it's more of an indictment, think of it that way, than the trial.
A motion for a hearing.
Yeah, motion for a hearing.
So it's not, so it's not voting, so basically to? And these motions are identical.
Right. Sometimes grand juries vote no bills, meaning there's nothing here.
Any further discussion?
So, when we come to a vote, are we talking about both motions?
No, the other one hasn't been made yet, we're doing them individually.
Okay, so this is?
Only made it for Costigan.
It's tied to the chair.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And is the prerogative of the chair, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, in terms of your disposition on this question. All those in favor of the motion? John, Hulse?
We just state our preference, I guess.
No.
Dan Ensmay?
No.
Barry Berman?
Yes.
No.
Andy Freedman? No. And John Arena's no.
It's four to one, the motion fails.
The motion fails to pass. Okay. Next?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to skip Elizabeth as she has resigned. Move to file a notice of removal with the Redding Town Clerk pursuant to section 8.12.1.1a of the Redding Home Rule Charter for the following individual holding the following office. Nancy Doctor, Associate Member of the Board of Health. Reasons cited for the proposed removal are as follows. One, failure to act on the appointment of the health agent Laura Blasek as the authorized agent of the Board of Health. Two, pursuing lines of questioning and taking individual actions and votes regarding Ms. Blasek that have exceeded the Board of Health's lawful duties and powers under the Massachusetts general laws and the Redding Home Rule Charter and bylaws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. John Hulse?
Yes.
Dan Ensmay?
Yes.
Barry Berman?
Yes.
Andy Freedman?
No.
And John Arena votes yes. So that's four one. The consequence of this is this?
There's another motion at the end.
All right, I'll wait for it.
Thank you.
Ray, do we need to make any motion off a timely posting, or is that just assumed to happen tomorrow? Because the 26th doesn't work.
You don't need, you don't need to, to make, include that in the motion.
Thank you.
I think.
All right, I further move that the public hearing on such removals be held at the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of 9/26/2017, and that the town clerk be directed to give notice of such hearing to Nancy Doctor not less than five days prior to the hearing in accordance with section 8.12.2 of the Redding Home Rule Charter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion on the motion?
Just one point of clarification.
Yes.
You should be reminded that we count days in a funny way under the charter. So the five-day notice means five days that town hall is open. Okay.
But the 20 is calendar days?
20 is calendar days.
Okay, that's right, it's less than 10.
Okay, so the notice needs to be given no later than the 18th.
Does that need to be in there, or is that understood?
It's understood.
No, it's understood, I mean, that, that's what the charter said, but it's sufficiently confusing that you should always be reminded when, when something important's happened.
Doesn't it seem, look, it seems to me that that's the time it has to be done by.
That's right.
More notice is better.
Absolutely.
So I think we should act with all due haste and give notice.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, this is a show of hands?
Did he make the motion?
Yeah, we do, we do all the roll calls at this point?
No, I'm going to do a show of hands, this is sufficient.
Your call.
All those in favor? Those opposed?
None.
Abstaining? You're abstaining? Okay, so, 4-1-0, sorry, 3-1-0.
Four, four.
Four, zero, one. Four, zero, one.
Thank you.
We're four, zero.
Sorry.
Did you have a, did you have a medical emergency?
I'm on the wrong tire zone tonight, I'm sorry.
Not enough travel.
All right. Okay, that concludes our discussion, our topic, the 30 topics. We're about five minutes ahead for our next topic. If you want, we can go to approval of the minutes.
Sure.
Chairman, move to approve the minutes of July 25th, 2017, as a matter of.
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, any further discussion on the minutes of July 25th?
I'll ask, yes.
Hearing none, all those in favor of, of the minutes of July 25th, 2017, raise your hands.
I wasn't there after the same.
Okay, so we have 4-0-1.
Yeah.
No corrections, thank you.
You're home free. Technically, good start early, it's not a full appearing, but if you want to wait.
I can't, it's unusual for folks to show up at 9:30 for?
There'd be other people.
Any portion of this meeting, so. Do you want to bring up the slides you had in the packet on the screen?
Yeah, that's what I, exactly what I'm looking for.
I think it's on 5D1.
Passed all the, those doors. Must be getting close.
Oh, it's an earlier version.
Yeah. Here we go. Oh, come on. Ah, there you go. Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just to be clear, if the board wishes to change the current practice, I would strongly advise having a public hearing, advertising it, notifying people, and doing that as quickly as possible. But it's not the objective tonight for you to change what the current practice is, just indicate your interest in, in change and setting that as a future agenda.
Bob, I have a question about that.
Yeah, John, please.
What is the deadline? I, I know that when we discuss this, you know, we, we?
Let me go get the police.
We get this thing earlier, you know, and?
Yeah, let me get him, he's the expert.
He's got to know when it, you know, when the, when the deadline is, if a change is to be made.
I don't see this page in our package.
It's in tonight's package.
What's the page name? It's in the Thursday.
Forty-two.
Okay, it's in the Thursday package.
No, it's in tonight's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What page is it, sorry?
Forty-two.
It's forty-two.
John, if you wouldn't mind restating that question?
Yeah.
I was wondering what the, what the deadline was.
I was wondering what the deadline was for, if a change in these fees was to happen, what would the deadline be for us to do that? Because I know last year when we discussed this as a possibility, we'd actually passed the deadline, so.
Yeah, and just to be clear, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, the price is not on the sticker.
Correct.
So, that's more of a communication, I would say, public relations issue.
Right.
So you have two logistical questions. One is when do you need to order stickers, and if the board is gonna split stickers to have two different types.
Right.
And then the other is, what's the earliest that people start buying next year's stickers, so that they have some notice of when the price has changed?
So normally, we start order by now to the end of September is when stickers are ordered for next year, and they usually start buying them around Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving for the following, for the following year. I mean, don't get me wrong, we get a whole office, you know, for a little bit longer, but I mean, I think we usually, it's solid eight to 10 weeks sometimes.
Well, if they were split, you could have a second sticker for one or the other.
Absolutely.
So I think if the board is willing to take this up at your first agenda in October, that would be okay.
Still?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, ten days into October.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And then you can order however many stickers.
Sure, yeah.
Because you can't let, you know, you can't let this discussion get away from us.
Yeah, and there's a...
It inadvertently did last year, because, you know...
Yes, it did. And there's a meeting on the 26th.
Correct, it was too late.
Okay, you have an agenda that's reasonably full on the 26th, but it can always come there if you wish. You know, you'll see it, it's crowded. Just to give you some background on the sticker, it's a $25 price, there is a senior discount of, it's $15 if you prove that you're over age 65, we don't take your word. There's additional household discount of $10 each, but that's if you buy them at the same exact instant that you buy the $25 one, as I found out to my discouragement a few years ago.
You don't take my word?
On you being 65?
Yes.
No, you'd have to prove that to me. I don't, I don't believe that.
That's unfair.
There's a small chart there showing how many stickers have been bought in the recent several years. On average, it's just under 4,000. Six or seven years ago, when I last brought this in front of that board, the question was asked, why do people buy stickers, and there's no way to know. My answer was both reasons. Many people's answers were both reasons. At the time, we looked at monthly data of purchase, and it seemed like a reasonable answer that people that bought them between Thanksgiving and January, February were buying them for the train station. That doesn't mean they were commuting every day, but it means they had an interest in having it before you would do compost work generally. And that was about 25% of the stickers. During the spring and fall seasons of composting, if you will, that accounted for about 50% of the stickers. Again, we can't say no one was also interested in the trains, but, you know, it's a pattern. And then the rest of the year was the rest of the stickers. So, it didn't tell you anything conclusively, other than, there's a lot of people that seem to be buying this for the compost center, probably half, if you add it all up at least.
But that was six years ago, right?
And that was six years ago, and the pattern has not changed.
But that was, and that was before we started picking, doing curbside?
Yes, so I'll get to that on a different memo. The amount of trips to the compost center is substantially lower, but as you can see, the amount of stickers sold is not. And again, when you can buy one sticker for $25 for either purpose...
It's kind of irrelevant.
Yeah, you know, how many times are you gonna do either, it's just one sticker.
Doesn't matter.
So, on average, our revenue has been $80,000, roughly in line with that graph there over the last several years. And as it turns out, because of those two discounts, and certain people are eligible for free ones, I can't remember the details, but I know you guys know, the average price is between $20 and $21 of revenue for the average sticker that's out there.
Bob, why are the two dips in the curve, those are months along the...
Those are years, those are annual. Don't know.
Okay.
I didn't buy one in both of those years, so maybe there was a reason. I have no idea. You know, it's not that much of a dip...
It's only 600.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's 3,400 to 4,000, so...
Got it.
Order of magnitude. What I have suggested, or will suggest, is that the town offer a compost center-only sticker, and then a second sticker that can do both, which is what we have now effectively. You know, following up on the earlier discussion from Mr. Brown about you can only charge what it costs, which I obviously agree with, we spend about $70,000 a year to run the compost center, and that's hard costs that I can show you. Most of them are wages, some of them are tax workers, and some of them are expenses. If you went to a $20 compost-only sticker, as an example, that would probably yield at least $50,000 of revenue, and I at least would be comfortable that that's covering our costs or close enough. On the high end, I think you could go to $30,000, and we could argue that somewhere between 20 and 30, it's covering the cost.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars.
I'm sorry, $30 per sticker. So currently, it's 25, it's right in the ballpark of what it costs to run the compost center, purely. It's a lot harder for me to give you that kind of guess on the depot.
So Bob, why wouldn't you leave it at 25 for compost only?
You can.
Because it sounds like that, you know, it sounds like that's very close...
Absolutely can.
If you had a... And the reality is, that, you know, you may not sell as many compost stickers because you're not combining them anymore.
Right.
So I think to reduce that leaves you open to, you know, to not covering your costs, and you should cover, we should be covering our costs of composting.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I'll just say, it's from experience, you really need to have exact change when you're buying a sticker, and a 20 is a lot easier to have than 25, as I found out the hard way.
Checks.
Do you take checks?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, you do.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Just to follow up on this point, though, while we're on the compost center, this is the amount of annual trips, and I had to write this memo to CPDC a couple days ago. This is, this period here is the result of us adding leaf collections, which cost us money in the 10-year rubbish contract. It's not free. But it has greatly reduced, as you can see, the number of trips to the compost center, you know, by 10, 15%. And again, we have a growing population, not a shrinking one, so it's at least 10 or 15%. I just thought it's important that you see that, so I can't tell you how many stickers would you sell, I would guess that the reduced compost centers' trips are not necessarily reduced customers as one-to-one. I put out bags for leaves I pick up, I also go to the compost center, I just don't go as often as I used to. Is anyone not going at all? Probably some, but probably not as many as do what I do, which is both.
You're leaving out the social aspects of the compost.
Yes.
Come on.
Yes, I am.
There's a lot going on over there.
And the joy of being in the mud.
And who has gotten all their leaves up really in time for the collection?
Yeah, there is that too.
Plus, you gotta leave it open for a month.
And no matter what we do, it's the wrong answer for the season.
Right, of course.
Who knows when the leaves are gonna, they've already started to fall, it's summer.
So again, tonight's, tonight's meeting is merely to gauge the board's interest in doing a split, and the discussion, the heavy discussion to become a later date.
I'm interested in the split, but I have an intimate... What is the annual MBTA assessment to the town?
It's injury you say that, I was gonna ask Ray, but I never did. Let's move over now to the train station, the depot. In the packet tonight, Chief Sagala gave you a memo describing all the different parking variations downtown, the different kind of business stickers and the resident stickers. There is over 500 spaces that are used pretty much daily, maybe not in the summer so intensely for daily commuters. Anecdotally, from the patterns I told you, as many as 1,000 people may be buying a sticker that have interest in parking for some period of time at the depot, the 25 box. That could be as little as seven or eight times a year, just to have the flexibility. So it's probably a reasonable thing to say somewhere between 500 or 1,000 are bought with parking in mind, but that's a really wide range. If you start thinking of what it costs, I can't easily give you a cost, we would really have to work on that, as was mentioned in an email to you over the weekend, there is significant cost of snowplow.
Yeah.
I asked town council, but I've not yet a chance to follow up, if we can recover loss of state aid with a fee. And the way the state laws work, the answer's almost always no, because it's logical. Because we have a train station, we are docked somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 of state aid directly. It's right on the cherry sheet, you can't miss it. If we were North Reading and we did not have that, we would get that much more state aid, just to be really clear.
So what's the rationale for withholding state aid if you have transportation, that you can recover costs elsewhere?
Because the MBTA needs to be funded, and we are one of the methods that they are funded.
So is it...
The towns that directly benefit, if you will, from having an MBTA presence, pay some amount, we pay $500,000, $600,000.
So could you justify as recovery of direct costs, barring the $600,000 by the 500?
I don't know.
That's the only question.
My guess is no.
Well, let's pursue that.
But I'm happy to follow up with Ray.
And I think you can make a time of day like we do now, before 10:30, you'd need the sticker. If it's a casual parker...
That's, enforcement's a whole nother...
They wouldn't need a sticker to park other than those hours.
The presentation I gave to the board several years ago was, at the time, and since the MBTA is charging four bucks a day, presuming there are at least some commuters that are using it daily, the average commuter spends 220 days working, vacation, holidays, all that, you know, otherwise it'd be higher. They're spending 880 bucks. And you'll recall that some number of years ago, we removed the out-of-town residents, or the sticker for out-of-town folks to buy if they used to park at the End of Haven. We sold those to businesses. I don't remember what we were charging, but that was fully subscribed very quickly, I remember, every year. And I personally know some folks that lived in North Reading that were always thrilled to come down and do that, and they were, they're now coming and paying four bucks a day, or they're going over to Woburn.
But the MBTA lot is not fully subscribed, it's rolling in.
I would say now it's pretty close.
It's pretty full, yeah, it's pretty busy. At least the last year and a half.
And there's been no challenge to that fee as being unrealistic or not?
The $4?
Yeah.
Set by the state, who's gonna...
Yeah, yeah, but the point I'm making is, if we set something like $4 a day, are we in our same rights or not?
I don't, I don't know.
That's for another day.
That is a tough question.
Well, we're talking about...
It's a fair question.
Well, there's, I mean, the thing is, is that if, you know, there's a, there's the temptation to try to, you know, set this fee a little bit higher to offset costs and increase revenues. So, I use myself as kind of an example, I'm happy to pay the $25 fee. I'd probably go down and park at the depot to take the train probably about twice a month. So to me, that's worth it. At a certain point, if it gets raised too, too high, I might just pay the $4 a day at the MBTA, one, which by the way, the town gets zero for.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna, we don't wanna discourage people from kinda using that, and I know when I use the train station, every single car that's parked along, in that parking lot, right by the tracks and along, I forget the name of the street, all those people have stickers.
Yeah.
So, you know, and it's, you can't, you cannot get a spot on those streets if you come like after 8:30 or 9:00.
Yep.
If you just wanted to park casually, you couldn't, because it's all taken up by people with stickers.
I did have a super secret spot that I didn't...
At a certain point, if you set that cost too high, people will find alternative ways.
Yes.
You know, do we wanna encourage or discourage it, that's a different discussion.
Well, that goes back to enforcement.
Right, but, you know, the thing is, whatever we, whatever, we have to set it in a way that, that people just won't flee, and instead of getting the $25, if we set it at 100, 150, 200, whatever, we get zero, because everyone's saying, I'm not paying that at all, and I'll park for the $4 a day, or they'll find alternative ways to get the...
Well, you know, it does, it seems to me, if you work 50 weeks and you pay two bucks a day, that's 10 bucks for a week's worth of parking, if you're a daily commuter. I mean, it's the bargain of the century. 500 bucks a year gets you a place to park and to get on the train and save yourself from the wall of traffic that, you know, goes in and out of Boston every day. I mean, to me, you know, setting something at half the cost of what the MBTA is charging, but, you know, what's, you know, I mean, is that an unreasonable number? I mean, you know, I drove to Boston every day for many, many years, and parking there, besides the torture of getting there, $2 a day would have been, I mean...
But that's if you use it every day. The thing that, the unknown part of this, is how many people use it every day, and how many people are like me, who might use it twice a month, but are glad to have the spot down there and happy to pay this sticker. So that's the, right, I wouldn't pay, because I don't use it every day.
You wouldn't pay $500 a year.
I wouldn't pay $500.
I understand.
I would pay, I would pay zero and figure out, I drive, and I just drive it.
And what would we lose?
You'd lose my...
What would the town lose?
My $25.
Do you go to the compost?
Yeah, but you know what the offset is?
You're going to the compost, aren't you?
I don't know anymore.
Okay. Long as you're hiring your Redding landscaper, that's fine.
The, I think the point here is, we're looking for price points, and this is later discussion, to justify it. If people are, if the world is coming twice a month, and we're occupying, what is it, 800 spots?
About 500.
That means you've got, what is it, 7,500 people vying for that spot in order to have the same traffic, so that can't be true, what you're describing, it's probably a blend. But the town is far from off, to charge something closer to a market rate, it would dispose others to find better alternatives, but, you know, that's kind of the market economy, there is the MBTA lot, if you're gonna go twice a month, you just have to get down there early enough.
But to remind, just bringing back to something you said, I think at the beginning of the meeting...
Yeah.
Aren't we supposed to set it based on the cost to the town?
It can't exceed the operational cost, but you may find the operational cost as far in excess.
Right.
Right. So, there's an open question as to what that is.
Right, I can't answer that tonight.
But...
If you're interested, I can answer it, though.
That'll be a ceiling number, but the question tonight is really, are you guys willing to entertain the thought of kind of splitting the rate?
I think Bill...
Bill?
You might wanna check with Wakefield, down in the Greenwood section, they have a slot to put in $2 a day.
Is that go to Wakefield?
Two bucks or four bucks?
No, I think it's two, Wakefield.
I think it's four, because they have all MBTA parking at Wakefield.
No, no.
Greenwood.
Not in the Greenwood section, from the bridge down to the crossing, that's the town of Wakefield, and they do have a slot there with money, I think it's $2, Bob.
And is it, sorry about this, is it still manual slots? It's not the smartphone and?
Uh, that I don't know, but the last time I knew it was the slots, so.
Okay.
Are you suggesting there's an opportunity to go to kind of, um, metering?
Well, the MBTA uses smartphones now. Um, I've used that at Wakefield, for instance, as opposed to going here for free.
Well, you also have to look at the cost of, you know, the installation and the cost of the vehicles. I mean, everything adds money to this. You know, and I think a really important thing to look at, and I've done a little research on this. I think a little bit, towns that fit into our, you know, our compared, what do we call that?
Peers.
Peers, um, that have stations. You know, some are charging, you know, two or three hundred, but the majority of them are five to eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And I think all of them are charging in that general vicinity, those that have train stations.
So I'm gonna take all of this discussion, I'm sorry, Bob.
Um, just, it's probably obvious, but I still feel like I need to say it. The thing we don't wanna do is you set a price so that the lot is empty and these guys are busy chasing people parking in the neighborhoods.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, that's the unintended consequence we need to avoid. So, I would urge the board, whatever it does, to maybe go a little lower than where you think you wanna be, and let's see what happens.
Creep out.
Let's see what, what business these folks get, let's see what kind of data you can collect.
What's enforcement like now? What do you find in terms of folks who are trying to escape into the neighborhoods? How would you characterize it?
It's not as much, I think, as in the neighborhoods as it is for people that are, expiring stickers and stuff that we actually, like, embarrass. There are stickers, but not everybody has the carry here until we fail one quite a way.
But those are friendlies. Those aren't trying to disappear in the neighborhood.
Right. Yeah, it seems to be bad in neighborhoods.
No, because the neighbors are much worse.
Right.
They're self policing, I'm guessing.
The neighbors will generally, it used to be the neighbors would call, and then once that happened a few times, people stopped.
Yeah, it's still all unintended consequences. If you make it expensive, very expensive, folks are gonna look for a creative alternative. Um, again, the topic of tonight, I'm sorry, yes, Vanessa.
Vanessa Albright of Grant Street. Um, as someone who is within walking distance to the train depot, um, I have people in my neighborhood who park for New Hampshire. Um, we don't have any restricted parking in my area. So there would be no reason for the police to come and police the area. However, if the parking rate increases exponentially, then that creep is going to filter out into all.
What street is that, are you on?
Yeah, Grant Street.
People, that's a long walk from Grant Street to the station.
Not my section of Grant. I'm by the line of Grant.
From Deering Street every day. It's about eight thousand Deering, every day.
It's shorter than New Hampshire.
Well, that's a good point. Maybe we look for, putting the restricted signs a little bit, a little bit more buffering than we have.
They did that around Vernon Street and they moved up to Deering.
Yeah, they're always gonna move.
They're on Mount Vernon, and so they, they come up to Dudley.
Can I just ask a general, uh, sort of historical question before we vote on this? And that is, I thi- I think I understand the answer, but we charge a fee for parking in compost, but not for, say, I don't know, use of the dog park or the, don't send me emails about your dog. I love dogs. Or tennis courts, or things like that. So why?
Tennis court, out of towners pay.
Out of towners pay.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Do in-towners pay a reduced amount or no, nothing?
So I know we have some fees for some things and not for others.
Are paid for.
Yeah, most things there are fees.
And how are we, how are we, how are those fees, how is it determined what we charge fees for and what we don't?
Um, there's, there's two groups, to my knowledge, that are most experienced in this. One's the school committee for athletic fees.
Mm-hmm.
And then one's the recreation committee for other fields. I really don't wanna answer for them. John has had some experience.
They were out to visit us here, at the Board of Selectmen, before they, they hadn't, they hadn't updated their fee structure honestly, in a decade or longer. And they put a lot of time and energy, you know, into doing that, into looking at it. And looked at a lot of comparables, you know, in neighboring peer, peer communities. And they came up with a system of charging. So users pay. That's not uncommon. I mean, now, if you're from town, you pay certainly a lot less than if you're out of town.
Right.
So.
Is your question how the numbers are arrived yet?
No, 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 just for what services do we, how do we select what services we charge fees for and what we don't charge fees for?
Charge fees for those things that cost us money, I think is pretty much the general rule.
Yeah.
If it costs us something to do it, we attach a fee to it with the goal of, you know.
Recovering our cost.
We are able to.
I mean, that's kind of the goal.
And it's discretionary. You don't have to do it.
We don't do it for everything.
Chief, how many, how many spots are in the, the actual, the lot, our lot?
I think I have that here in a memo.
Read it first.
All the old man, this is glasses on.
Alright, so the depot commuter parking lot is ninety-six spots, depot resident parking lot is thirty-five spots. So the big ones in the left.
The depot resident, that's, uh.
The one to the right, as you're, as you're facing, from Lincoln Street?
Uh, they all look like one lot to me anyway.
Right, but this, they kinda came up with a system a few years ago, how to actually, uh, write it down. Vine Street parking lot has forty-two spots. Lincoln Street, the north side of Lincoln Street is thirty-eight spots. But in total, there's five hundred twenty-five resident parking spots available around the depot area.
Okay.
So, if, if the board is interested in splitting it, or at least continuing the discussion, you know, please ask questions. What other information do you need? I'll try to get some estimate of what it costs to maintain the parking down there. You know, snow plowing and enforcement. And I'll ask the question about lost state aid. I don't think so. And I, I don't know how other towns justify higher fees. From experience, maybe they didn't do careful accounting, as we tend to. They did it more on market supply and demand. And that's a natural instinct for a private sector person on a voluntary board to do. What are everyone else's charge? What is the market? We can charge this. And, you know, yeah, that's okay as a first blush, but then you also have to say, can we justify this? Uh, you know, in your chairs today, the auditors were in, and I would have to justify the fee perhaps to the auditors.
I mean, people who are here are paying taxes for other things. Shouldn't be expected to pay the same thing, you know, as a, a non-resident who pays the four dollars a day at the MBTA one. I mean, there are taxpayers here.
You're right.
So.
Although this is discretionary. We're all paying taxes. I don't park at the depot.
Right, so in a lot of ways, though, you're subsidizing the people who use it when it's only twenty-five dollars.
Correct. So the real question is to put the fee up on those who use it, rather than peanut buttering everywhere.
And John, there, there, I think, Bob, to your question, which I took as a question.
Hmm.
If, if there's an appetite to split, I personally have an appetite to split these two things.
Okay.
Uh, you know, in my opinion, a twenty-five dollar compost sticker is a bargain, you know. I mean, and it, and as coincidentally turns out, a twenty-five dollar sticker, if we, for compost, kinda covers the cost, or pretty close, give or take. You're gonna sell probably a few less stickers, okay. Um, and, you know, that, based on the numbers you gave us earlier, um, it kind of is a wash, which is what it should be. Because when you think about residential protection, and even commercial protection for that matter, on their real estate taxes, we take their money and we're spending it on maintaining the compost. And we're spending it on, you know, maintaining the parking lot and the snow removals. So I think the same thing, you've given us a pretty good approximation of what it costs to run the compost. My suspicion is, we'd probably find a pretty big number, um, trying to maintain all, just snow removal.
Yeah.
You know, besides the fact that you've got roadwork to be done, you've got repair and maintenance that's gonna go on.
Does that include capital or just operating?
Well, you're not supposed to charge capital, but if it's every year paving, that's an operating cost. If it's a capital project, no.
So you don't, down to compost, you don't have anything that's of that nature? Or you gotta do something major, like every year?
No comment. You should.
I think you come on, it seems to me you ought to be able to do, it's not gonna be a precise number.
Yeah, and to the, to the point.
It's gonna be an average winter, for example, you know.
This is actually expense recovery at the end of the year.
Yes.
We're calling it fees. We're already spending the money in the expense side.
We're freeing money up, yeah. Currently, we are spending taxpayer dollars.
Right.
For these expenses. If we, so when a fee comes in that is really an expense reimbursement, what we've done is freed those tax dollars to go back to things like public safety and schools and so forth.
And that's why I treat this as.
That's why it makes sense to me.
I'd like to treat this as expense recovery and focus on what the real cost is to deliver and use that to help explain it. Bob?
Uh, and just to be clear, sort of to an earlier discussion, um, these, these revenues all go into the general fund. So even though they may cover DPW costs, DPW's not gonna get the funding. Two-thirds approximately go into the schools, one-third approximately go into the town. You know, just to point that out.
Like school parking.
And, you know, in terms of sort of unintended consequences, which is always what I worry about, I figure that's my job. Um, you don't wanna drop the compost center too low and start charging for leaf pickup, because then it'll dry down there and the neighbors will go out of their mind.
Right.
Uh, down there. So, you know, I, I did hear of a recent public hearing where the Meadowbrook was in. And that's why I wrote the memo, is just to clarify exactly what the compost center traffic issue is. And it is lower than it was in prior years because, I think, we added leaf pickup.
We don't have a, uh, a sticker for commercial use. In other words, if you're a Reading contractor. We wanna think about that, because again, we wanna, we wanna encourage the composting to happen. And if, you know, if you're a Reading contractor and you're going down there and disposing, and, you know, obviously that's.
Meal landscaper.
Yeah.
Are those guys buyers as well as sellers? Aren't they depositors?
Those guys, those guys don't, can't come in to the composting area with their commercial vehicles.
Correct.
They go, there's a place in Woburn, they all go.
But they do pick up, they'll, they'll buy material from us. So you probably want a little more encouragement to buy.
I can ask DPW what their thoughts are on that. I, I've asked them in the past. And it kinda, it's gonna come down to monitor. You know, with all due respect, you have a senior tax worker out there. What happens when the commercial guy comes in and he doesn't have a sticker? Right now, they know they can't come in, so they don't.
Right.
Enforcement is a big part of this.
If you come in with four barrels, okay. You know, you come in with your little utility trailer and four barrels, that's fine. You show up with the big red, you know, Joe's landscaping, you're not getting in there.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I don't see why philosophically we'd be opposed, other than it's just a different type of operation.
One, one helpful way to look at this, Bob, you had done this earlier. There are two peaks in the demand side of this. One at the, in December, and another one is at the end of the year, June, July.
Spring.
Um, spring, April, April, May.
It's pretty clear, those are two different audiences. And while you think of the twenty-five as getting you to, you know, parking in the compost, it's pretty clear, there's two different buyers out there. And so, the compost folks, I, I, I would simplify it and say they're probably buying it for the compost, because if they bought it for parking, they would've bought it already. So, they're okay spending the twenty-five.
Being a compost aficionado, I can tell you, the bubbling thing happens. You know, if I go down and buy my sticker, which I'll probably buy in February or March, when I look out there and go, the place is a mess. I gotta start, you know, thinking about it, because the snow is gone. I buy the second sticker for ten bucks. Why? Because I might decide to go on the train. That car never goes to the compost. You know, it's the one that I would probably leave at the train, the way Barry uses it, a couple times a month, or I don't use it that often. So, yeah, you're gonna, there'll be some falloff here or there for that. But, you know, the compost buyers, I think, are in the first, they're in the first quarter. Parking buyers are in the fourth quarter.
Right behind me for a free prior year.
Compost buyers in April, May, June are, I think, by definition, buying with twenty-five bucks to go to the compost center.
Yep.
The parkers in January are okay with twenty-five bucks to park. They're two different constituencies. It's not, and we can view them as two.
And if you, and if you use the, if you use the train every day, you're buying your sticker early, because you don't wanna get a ticket two or three times.
Yeah, it really, yeah, changes the economics dramatically.
Vanessa?
Uh, I have two perspectives on this. Um, one, where my finance committee hat, um, I would be very interested in the numbers for what realistically costs or estimated cost for annual maintenance. Um, because I feel that would be really indicative of the expenses to the town. Um, as a resident, though, and I'm sure this will be discussed more in the future meeting, um, but I would hesitate in, uh, setting precedent for determining what is optional for some people, um, as opposed to something that's a need. I think many people, um, are pulled to Reading because of our great location for highways, as well as the Reading depot. So if the parking ticket becomes fair game, then what perceived optional service that the town offers could next be eligible for increased fees. Uh, so I, that would only be my comment to the board. Um, because perhaps this board thinks that's an optional fee, but perhaps next year, or however many years down the line, another board thinks that some other service that the town currently covers is now optional, and therefore they're going to increase the fees on that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
As the Reading has done, my brother uses the, um, the Reading parking. And it's always surprising to me that, uh, he, the way that he expresses himself is, he parks there because it's convenient. And, uh, when it comes to the expensive side, doing like snow, it's always more difficult to clean those parking spots that are closer to the train than are further away to the train. So they might give you an idea to have an approach of dividing sections. And the closer you are to the train, that parking sticker might be a little more expensive than the further away you are from it. So that way, you, people will pay for convenience. So that, and the other thing is that you're not charging everybody forty bucks, but someone that wants to park closer to the train and goes there faster is willing to pay for you.
So it's like the airline model.
The chief will hang himself in enforcement.
We put those boxes next to the lot.
We have to hire four more cops.
Because it costs more money to clean those parts.
It's a perfectly reasonable conclusion. I, I think the laughter's a little bit over the enforcement side. It's almost like you're not in first class, business class, economy preferred, an economy, and everyone's got a different color. But I, I get the thought. It's, it's market-based pricing.
I'll, I'll also horrify you with this comment, that strictly speaking, from an economic development perspective, parking should not be wasted on commuters, downtown parking. That's what we found from our peers.
No parking, no customers.
Situation where we have a train station, not only a train station, it's in our downtown, really. That is not typical, if you think about.
That's true where they are.
So that would say you don't, you don't devote it entirely to.
Wakefield.
There's been some discussion internally about, you know, and I'm horrified at it, but it's like, no, that's what people expect. They're not gonna wanna take a shuttle bus to the train station, but again, strictly from economic development, that's the model.
So maybe it's a split model. Anyway, we've kinda beat this to death. I'm, I'm in favor of a, of a split approach as well.
So basically, one for the compost and then one for a compost slash parking, right?
If you have questions you think of, please send me. I've written down a few here. I will look for them. Cost of service for both, although the compost center is pretty well outlined. And, um, you know, what does DPW think about having commercial stickers for the compost center? So if there's anything else you think of?
No. I guess the only other thing is, are there any technology of any sort that's helpful, putting aside for the moment the, um.
Well, we've, we've talked about that with respect to downtown parking broadly.
Yeah.
And that's a discussion that'll be in front of you at some point in the next six months or a year. Um, and again, I, I have no opinion on this, but again, from visiting our peer communities, it's much more common that they charge. There is not free downtown parking. Lexington's the best example. Um, I forget the exact cost, but Mass Ave, there's a certain price. And then as you get away from Mass Ave, it's cheaper.
Yeah, it's to your point, it's convenient.
Business meter.
But the meters, the meters are more expensive.
They have meters, but it's also.
Well, that's kind of the thought. If you had, if you went to per day everywhere and you had a nickel rate and I'm making this up, a dime rate and a dollar rate, you could do what's described here pretty easily, if everyone did it electronically.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I'm horrified at the idea of parking meters all over town visually. Just no.
No, I agree.
We've got a long way to go on the economic development side before we can start thinking about that.
I agree.
We gotta, I mean, we have to get commerce in and get it vibrant. You know, there's a lot of things stepping in that direction.
Yeah.
I think that's a, this piece of discussion, I think, is for, you know, a future time.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, if there's no other comments, why don't we move on to our last topic tonight, which is the demand fees review? Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Always a pleasure to have the police in the public.
Good night, Kevin. Good night. This, um, this chart, when I first saw it, I had to ask the finance department to do it again, because I knew it was wrong, but it wasn't wrong. It was right. I was, I was, I'm still shocked what it says. Um, this is the last three years of what we've collected in demand fees, which again, are twenty-five dollars per tax bill, per bill, I'll say.
That's for being late.
For being late, for having a late payment, not just from the date, but a certain amount of leniency after the date. Um, we collect five, six thousand dollars on real estate tax bills that are late. Uh, we collect a thousand dollars for personal property, and we collect fifty-five thousand for cars, for excise tax.
Is your recent cars ever?
Those are separate from, like, the water thing?
Yes.
Why are cars more prone, just more of?
Because people have mortgages and banks pay the mortgage for them and don't pay late. And people are actually responsible for their own excise tax bills, and this is what people tend to do. So, on average, two thousand tax bills a year paid late, uh, excise tax bills, which just totally seemed unrealistic to me. And I, I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-three thousand excise bills. Um, you may not know yet, but that also surprised me when I first, like, nine thousand houses and we have twenty-three thousand cars, and I said, yes, we have more than two cars registered per household. So about ten percent of people with an excise tax bill are paying late every year.
We have the toys, too.
Yeah.
The motorhome, the boat, you know, all of those.
Observation, it's very similar people year after year. And I've fallen into this group once or twice. Once you've fallen once, you don't tend to do it again. And after, you know, listening and being upstairs for many years, I agreed to bring this discussion in front of the selectmen. On the one hand, it seems grossly unfair for a sixty-dollar excise tax bill to have a twenty-five dollar penalty. And to have a four thousand dollar property tax bill, a thousand quarterly, fifteen hundred quarterly, have the same twenty-five dollar penalty. That is state law. Welcome to state law. That is not something Reading can do anything about.
We can't do it as a percentage of the bill.
It's one for every, one number.
Twenty-five bucks, one price covers all late bills.
One regular rule.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Do you have any discretion over whether you issue it or not?
That's the next topic. So, I agreed to bring this discussion because the excise ratio just seems silly. And many people who are late have relatively small excise tax bills. Um, you know, as soon as your card depreciates past five or six years, your excise tax bill's a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks.
So twenty-five are late. Forty-seven fifty.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we did a survey of our peers as best we could, and twenty-five is high. There were a couple that are higher, thirty. And just so you're, those that don't know on the board, it's been twenty-five dollars for a. And just so you're, those that don't know on the board, it's been twenty-five dollars for, for quite a while. I'm gonna say eight or nine years, I'm not sure. It was, it was a long time ago that this was run in front of town meeting for whatever the reason. So a really important number is fifteen dollars. If you are above fifteen dollars a year for demand fees, this guy has no legal authority to waive it. It must be collected. I have bent those rules and risked imprisonment, just for one type of exception. Because it always seemed to me that someone who is hospitalized and physically unable to pay the bill should be allowed some leniency. So when I was upstairs, I did that a handful of times. But if the person who is hospitalized typically paid, typically paid the bill and the spouse who did not was able to but didn't know how, oh, well. That's not a good exception. If the person literally cannot pay the bill because they're in a hospital, that seemed like a good reason to me. And I was technically violating state law for that, but that was okay. If we lower it, or, and this would have to go to town meeting, if it was reduced to fifteen dollars, then every single person can complain to the treasurer and say.
I was in the hospital.
Well, whatever, they, they can have any reason at all. And there's lots of pretty good reasons, you know. So, you know, we have to weigh operationally, it's similar to the last discussion, what's the cost of collection? What's the cost of, you know, keeping your eye on the depot, keeping your eye on the compost center? If everyone can contest a fifteen-dollar late fee, I would suggest that rationally, everyone should. And rationally, we're collecting, you know, seventy thousand dollars from this now, put, to put all together. And this, again, is a partial year. I would say you should assume you're gonna lose all or most of that money. Because what is he gonna stand up and what is he gonna defend if he has discretion? I would expect him to be very lenient, because generally, we are as lenient as possible with people upstairs. Well, the purpose of the demand fee is primarily the, I presume, the cost of the outstanding interest and a discouragement to do it again. It is. It is very much a discouragement from doing it again, and yet we see it again and again.
We wanted to pay the original bill.
We do. That's all we want. It's part on time. So then if, if it's repetitive and it's the same individuals, do you still feel the same way about it being un, un criticized? One thing that I, I've thought about this for the last couple of weeks especially. I'm gonna say five or six years ago, we stopped sending out warnings to people when they were late. Because it was costing us, again, ten grand or whatever the number was. We said, you know, we're laying off people, let's cut that out. Let's cut this cost. It's not an easy thing to do, but I, I think it'd be a lot more palatable to send out some kind of warning than to just change this entirely.
Create more expense.
Yeah, to, to cause five or ten thousand dollars of postage and staff time to give people one last chance. Historically, that has not done much.
On our town census, which we are required to send out, do we ask for email addresses?
I don't think so. I'm not sure if we can. Can we ask for email addresses?
It'd just be so much easier for him to send out an email as a warning.
Or have it automated. Well, we have, we have through the website an ability to sign up specifically for payments, for warnings when you're late. And I don't know, last time I looked, it was five hundred people signed up. So those people do get electronic warnings. Would you do a better job marketing that? Maybe a silly thought, but if you, with every demand fee, if you said, look, sign up here, we'll warn you, you didn't, you didn't have it earlier. It's an opt-in, we can't do it without your permission. You'll get a warning from us, I don't know, thirty days, sixty days. And then you've got a way to kind of drive it. I'd be inclined to want to warn people and then feel better about this, knowing that you've given the last chance. Bringing this down's got a bunch of problems. One is the revenue reduction, two is you create, if you go low enough, hell, for somebody else's life, and as you said, most of it's, because we're naturally lenient, much of it's gonna be at risk. I'd be okay. And I would, I would be fine with causing him aggravation. That's part of my job, too. But I can't in good conscience ask November town meeting and support a loss of seventy thousand dollars of revenue. I might be able to after an override if it succeeds. That's a really tough conversation. I know.
I have a question. People should just pay the bills.
Absolutely.
Barry, you know, it's starting to scare me. You and I are on one page so much lately, it's making me wonder about this. I mean, honestly, why should the people that pay their bills have to have subsidize, and they're, they are subsidizing somebody who decides that they can, you know, that they can run off the rails and get away with it? It's not okay.
Totally agree with you.
Pay your bills. Honestly, pay your bills.
And if you're late, there's a fee, it's a stated fee, you'll get charged. Now, obviously, if someone's in the hospital, someone, I mean, you know, you know, we'll do the right thing.
I mean, you use certain discretion in certain extreme cases. Okay, look, it's not about being a hard guy. It's just, look, we are in a society where, you know, bills come due and they need to be paid, because everybody's depending on it.
I'll get to that, because that's an important point. We're also in a society where consumers are usually in charge. And when they deal with their bank and have this issue, the bank's, oh, I'm terribly sorry, we'll waive that fee all the time. Retail, waive fees all the time.
I will tell you, as a banker, who have requests almost every day to waive fees, here's my policy. First one, okay, all right, maybe you didn't know you needed to keep a certain amount. This is your mulligan. Second one, don't bother.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we're a bit of a bind here, as you pointed out in the beginning, that being government, we're, we're, it's one rule across the board. I wouldn't wanna lower it below twenty-five dollars for, for the, um, real estate tax, because that seems kind of in line. So we're sort of stuck with the excise number.
Yeah, and, and to respond to John's comment, which is an important one, the reason there are late fees and the reason there are interests and penalties is because municipalities and businesses need cash flow to run themselves. We are generally in very financially good shape in that regard, but we're unusual in that regard, that we have good cash balances. That's not to say we will always have good cash balances. I don't know. But if, if, you know, a large segment of your customers stop paying on time, it's running into a real serious problem. So absolutely, the answer is pay your bills, spend time. I couldn't agree with that more. I guess the only ask out of here is, is there a way to notify people about a pending obligation? Yeah, we can do that, and it'd be nice to automate it electronically.
I, I just really think you cannot, based on what I'm seeing there, the, the large majority of the people that have excise tax bills that come to pay them. Pay them in a timely way. That's what that tells me, based on how many thousands of cars.
Ninety-some percent pay on time.
Of course. So honestly, you cannot manage, you can't, this is a business. You can't manage the business to the lowest common denominator. Because what you will have is a shoddy business.
If you subsidize something, you get more of it. And if we change this, you'll get more of it. And I think ninety percent is not a bad number. Things are fine. There's not a problem here to solve, other than maybe notifying people. With that, I think we've come to the end of the evening. Is there any other business to come before the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor? Now it's five zero.